This morning is Tuesday, July the 11th, 2023. It is now 9:00 a.m. and we are in the community wing of City Hall. If you would all please rise and join me for our pledge of allegiance. And following the pledge, you are welcome to remain standing for a moment of silence to reflect, meditate, pray, or pause for a moment.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. If the clerk would call the roll, please.
Mayor Alvin.
Present.
Vice Mayor Danko.
Here.
Councilmember Hyder.
Here.
Councilmember Clufus.
Present.
Councilmember Pontieri.
Present.
All members are present.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda this morning is public participation. So in order for city staff to be able to respond to your questions or concerns, please fill out a comment card with your contact information. The comment cards can be found on the table, near the agendas, or available from the communications and marketing director seated in the back. Anyone wishing to speak may approach the podium, provide their name, and may speak for up to three minutes. Please direct all comments to the mayor, be concise and to the point, avoid delaying or interrupting the proceedings, and do not make any irrelevant, impertinent, or slanderous comments. Any person who becomes disorderly may be barred from making any additional comments and may be removed. So with that, I would invite our first member of the public to come to the podium and address City Council. Are there any...? Yes, sir.
How is everyone? Greeting, Mayor, members of the council. I am here today to bring awareness to a...
Just identify yourself.
Oh, sorry, my bad. Peter Johnson.
Okay, thank you.
Palm Coast. I am here today to bring awareness to a serious environmental issue that has plagued Palm Coast since its inception: feral cats. For the past two decades, administration after administration, some of which include members who are sitting in front of me today, has swept this issue under the rug. They have placated certain groups and individuals and organizations, allowing them to operate freely without fear of repercussions for their destructive actions. Palm Coast is growing at an exponential rate, and more and more people are spending time in the area than ever before. They come from all walks of life, and for one simple reason: the area's natural beauty. It's what makes Palm Coast such a desirable place to live and visit. Part of that natural beauty is our native wildlife, the same native wildlife that are being terrorized by these colony of cats that have been allowed free range of Palm Coast. Native snakes, birds, lizards, small mammals, and even our own native feline, the bobcat, are forced to fight for their lives and directly compete for food sources with these non-native, invasive, and highly efficient predators. Cat colony caretakers and advocates of native wildlife like myself have common ground on the issue. We both care about animals. With that being said, it's time that we prioritize the animals that are naturally found here over ones that are continuously dumped and abandoned by irresponsible pet owners, who are then enabled by groups like Community Cats of Palm Coast to be kept on the landscape. This town and its leadership, including Barbara Grossman, has been misled by groups like Alley Cat Allies, who came and spoke in this exact room in 2019. I was at that meeting when Alice, the head of the group, showed up and spewed her factually wrong and incorrect science as a way to justify the means of establishing a trap-neuterand-release program in Palm Coast. I asked a very simple question that day that she was unable to answer, and I'm going to ask that question again to you right now. What place does a non-native feline, whose lineage dates back to Africa, have in Palm Coast's ecosystem? The answer to that question is none. And for this reason, I am here today asking the council to create a policy that aligns with its own rules already in place, which can be found in the Chapter 8 Code of Ordinances, as well as its own signage that is posted in city parks, where some of these feeding stations can be found, and create a solution that does not violate 379.412 of the Florida state statutes, that explicitly states that leaving food out in places where wildlife can be enticed or encourages the feeding of wildlife is prohibited. Therefore, disbanding and outlawing TNR programs in feeding stations in the citywide on both private and public property, enacting leash laws for cats, as well as a clearly defined section of code in Chapter 8 to address the issue and prevent any further similar actions from taking place is what needs to be done. In every news release that goes out or article that you read in the city, project or paper that you hear the same theme: Palm Coast is a leader in that... Palm Coast is a leader in this, that, or the other. Well, it's time for Palm Coast to protect our native wildlife and be a leader in conservation. Thank you very much for your time today.
Thank you for your comments. Is there a next speaker, please?
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. We know that the city's going to continue to grow, and as it grows, there becomes more traffic in the city. And I would just like the city to be more responsible as far as planning and where developments are going, because the scientific community has come out many, many times and talked about how traffic fumes and traffic dust and traffic noise affects the health and well-being of residents. And so, when planning, development needs to take into account how much traffic it's going to put in a particular area and how that will affect the people's health and well-being. So I would just like to just state that I would really like the city to take the health concerns from the environment of the traffic fumes and dust and how it affects people's health. They gotta breathe. They gotta breathe. And we found out that people that smoke, wow, you know? They... it's... it's cancer and everything. And some of them quit smoking for a long time before the cancer even showed up. Same way with asbestos. With asbestos, they breathe in not the fumes and the dust, and what happens? People are coming down with cancers. And the studies from the health organizations are saying the same thing about traffic fumes and dust. You can breathe it, but there can be particles in there that will get into your lungs, travel to your bloodstream, find a way to an organ, and plant itself there till sometime later that it's going to commit havoc to your health system. So let's protect the health of everybody in Palm Coast, the whole... every resident. So I'm saying be responsible as to the amount of traffic you allow into residential neighborhoods, also not only the fumes and dust, the noise. The noise is horrific to go having traffic noise all day long going through a residential neighborhood. So I just ask you to be more responsible with it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address City Council at this time? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Dani. I have recently connected with the Party File gentlemen on their fight to get chickens approved for Palm Coast. And I've come here to show you that the movement is strong. I know you've never seen me here before. There are a lot of us that want backyard chickens that we just can't come to the meetings to make that known. We have... the gentlemen of the Party File have made attempts to reach out to councilmembers that oppose backyard chickens or a pilot program so that we can work with them in an attempt to create a program that they would be willing to agree to. And we would like to connect with those who oppose us so that we can create a program that everyone is on the same page and willing to let us have backyard chickens. For those that do oppose backyard chickens, we just strongly want to work with them so that we can come to an agreement on a pilot program, and we can present that program to either the mayor. And I would like to ask you, the mayor, who can we direct our pilot program to? Barbara Grossman, I believe was her name, was who did the presentation when it was a workshop. Her presentation was fine, but I think it missed some points that people who are pro-chicken would like to address. So do we need to reach out to Barbara about what we would like to see in a pilot program so that it was more catered to those of us who want backyard chickens? And that's all I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Any other members...? Yes, sir.
Morning. Jeffrey Seib. It appears that the image or model of Palm Coast as a small town with amenities like tree-lined streets and open spaces is rapidly morphing into the hustle and bustle of the big city with lots of everything, except small-town charm. Now with all the present and planned growth, we have some challenges that need immediate and concentrated attention. There is no consensus in the community for continued tax hikes. So one way to accomplish increased funding needs would be to reduce funding for the coming year from non- or less essential city departments and put the funds to where we all want it to be. And that is the city that is here in front of us right now. Any city department that is not involved in fixing the roads, fixing the drainage system, some type of saltwater canal intervention, parks, sidewalks, and maintaining open spaces in natural areas in all our neighborhoods could be funded at the same or lower rate in the coming year to help with this. There is also no consensus for any tax cut programs to attract new businesses at this time. City operating revenue comes from a variety of sources. Homeowners and businesses should pay their fair share. Other prudent measures would be to put on hold for now any sale or other actions regarding vacant city-owned property until we can have an in-depth discussion of alternatives and what this means for the average resident. Two years ago, as Chair of the City's Beautification and Environmental Advisory Committee, I made two presentations to the Planning Board regarding tax incentives for businesses and apartments utilizing the nationally-recognized Leadership in Energy and Environmental Design (LED) program for sustainable construction, of which this building and the community center both have utilized and have a rating. The first talk was an introduction. The second contained the mechanisms, then the incentives, just like what other cities in Florida and around the country have done. The Planning Board was ready to vote for this package. Staff said no, and it disappeared after that. A program like that would be worthwhile. I think the city should adopt in all its doings what the gentleman said in the public comments at the end of a recent council meeting: the theme, "The Model of Palm Coast Going Forward: Beautiful and Liveable." Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Are there any other members of the public that would like to address City Council at this time? Yes, sir.
Good morning, Robin McDonald, Palm Coast. I would like the city to tell the residents what the total cost of the new contract is with the garbage and recyclable company. How much did the new buckets cost, and who paid for them? And who was distributing them, and at what cost? Because I was told by city that the Public Works Department was distributing the buckets. Well, as of today, most of the residents that I know of haven't received their buckets. And they were... And when you come to a city council meeting, you're told to fill out one of these forms if you have a question, and the city will investigate it and get back to you. Well, as of this morning, I'm still waiting three weeks for an answer. I've requested information, and I was told that if I wanted a copy of the contract between the city and the garbage and recyclable company, I would have to pay between $20 and $25 to get a copy of it. That's ridiculous. Also, I was told that other questions, just fill out a form. So I have requested to see the contract, and I still haven't seen it. But let's get back to my initial point. Since we have the Director of Public Works with us this morning, why don't we just bring him up, and we can find out exactly what the cost is of the buckets, and... but more importantly, who's distributing them? Because like I said, I was told by the city that a Public Works Department was distributing them. Well, I have a serious problem with that. So what I'm going to do...
Mr. McDonald, before you go any further, this is the public comment section of the meeting.
I understand.
Excuse me. This is the... this is the op...
I understand. Okay, so I'm going to sit here until I get the answer to my question.
Okay.
Because like I said, you fill these forms out, and you can't get an answer. So while I'm here, you're all here, the director's here, I'll just sit here, and I'll wait.
Mr. McDonald, you're welcome to move your seat a little bit further from the podium so you don't interfere with the future speakers. But public comment is designed for you, as the public, to make comments to City Council, to allow us to follow up. Now, I do know that you can make an appointment with our city manager and/or our Public Works Director to get the specific answers...
I want the answer to come out in public.
Yeah, I understand. This meeting is not based on instant gratification for a question you have. There were three speakers before you that would also like information as well. So you don't stand up above or in front of them. We will answer all of the questions, and most of that information has been available to you online since the beginning of this discussion. Additionally, if you look at the next future agenda, you will see an item for the FCC contract being discussed in a future meeting. So, I mean, you're welcome to sit there, that's fine. But I suggest you take the opportunity to meet privately, because not every...
No, I don't want to meet privately. I want to...
Excuse me. Mr. McDonald, this is a public meeting. Your question may not be pertinent to the rest of the audience here. Okay?
It may not be what?
Because you want an answer doesn't mean everybody else in the room wants to spend their time listening to that answer. So I'm going to ask you again to please follow up personally and directly with the folks that can give you your information.
You're asking me or telling me?
Asking you.
Excuse me?
I'm asking you.
You know, it's a good thing I got a lot of respect.
And I respect you as well, too. I'm just trying to... I'm trying to serve...
I'm not a citizen yet.
Understood. Trying to serve the public. Are there... Are there any other members of the public that would like to address City Council at this time? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Nicole Darver. I'm a recent transplant here from Dallas. One thing I've noticed is we have a lot of Airbnbs, which I'm all for capitalization, you know? Just not exploitation. However, I do notice that there is an issue with the garbage. The visitors or the guests, they provide... Hopefully, they will end up putting the garbage out on the curb for the garbage men. However, we don't exactly know, and I know that there are laws, not before, you know, 6:00 p.m. Of course, they're not going to know that. What I do suggest is perhaps implementing a trash can requirement, because I never even knew what these buzzards were until the first day that I was here and my garbage was out, and they tore everything apart. We're talking dirty diapers everywhere, food, banana peels, toilet paper, you name it. And not only would the garbage cans, you know, help keep things contained and, you know, keep wildlife from going all over the place, but also it would allow our areas to be a little bit more beautified. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else like to make public comment? Yes, sir.
Hello, Josh Fabian. Dani came up and said pretty much everything I wanted to say. But I just... At the last meeting when we had the presentation about backyard chickens, there were multiple councilmembers who seemed maybe potentially on the fence, depending on what would be in a pilot program. And we've had people reach out to at least some and haven't heard responses. And it's only been like a week or two since we drafted what we think could be an acceptable pilot program based on what other cities in the area do. So I was just curious, what is the best way to do that? I can email every city council member what our proposed plan is. And if you're like, oh, no, we just... If we change this one rule, I would be for it. We would be interested in hearing what those differences of opinion and what rules should be, so we can get that done. So like I said, I can email everyone later today what that is. And then I can also reach out to the person that Dani was just told to reach out to. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else make public comment this morning? So with that, I'll close public comment, and let me just address a couple of the items. Regarding the gentleman that spoke about feral cats, city manager, at some point in time for a workshop in the future, I'd ask for a presentation so that we better understand what the situation is, and more importantly, what the various responsibilities are. I'm not clear on how that works locally, and I think it's a... would be a good addition to a future workshop.
Understood. Thank you, Mayor.
Next, there were several other discussions. I won't go into them in detail. But I think Mr. Carr, Mr. Seib, and I think perhaps another, the lady regarding the Airbnbs. I will remind everyone that we're about to launch the beginning of an initiative to open up our comprehensive plan. This comprehensive plan will be available to every resident of the city of Palm Coast for input, for comment, for interaction, for everyone to help create the vision of what this city should look like for the future. It's very rare for a city anywhere in the state of Florida to actually open up a comp plan and invite the public in. It's going to be a process. It's going to take some time. We're going to provide as many different forms of communication as possible, and we sincerely hope that as many people as possible will participate so that we get a best feel for what this city needs to look like, not just tomorrow, but years from now and actually generations from now as well. So we consider that one of our strategic action priorities, so it will continue to be a part of our process going forward. And finally, with regard to Mr. McDonald, city manager, I'd like to see that if you could help facilitate the information that he's asking for, I'd like to be copied on that as well so I know exactly what information has... what correct and detailed information, and then we'll make a decision if we need to release it to more of the public upon their request.
Yeah, understood, Mayor. And just to kind of close the loop on the conversation, Mr. McDonald, we did reach out to you. We actually, on the 22nd, we called, left a voicemail, and I appreciate you giving me your phone number personally. And we actually emailed you the information. We apologize for the cost, but that is part of our regular operating procedure when there's a large print job requested.
And it may be just some specific information within there that we can share and get us through the communication and the conversation. So like I said, I'd like to be in that loop in terms of the information that is shared with the gentleman from the public, okay? Now, I would ask City Council members, would you like to address any of the other comments this morning?
I have none.
Just one thing, Mayor. If you will, Josh and Dani, just make sure you email me, please, the proposed pilot program, so I can take a look at it. I haven't received it, so thank you.
And I'm sorry, maybe I'll piggyback. There was a question, I think it was asked twice. What is your best route forward with the discussion? So according to our Sunshine laws in Florida, what you might consider doing is contacting each city council member individually by whatever form of communication you choose. Or you can always make an appointment with our city manager, who could probably share additional ways to make your points to city council members. Just please keep in mind that we can't share the information you provide us with each other other than in a setting like this, to respect the Sunshine law. So hopefully, that'll be a little bit helpful. And I would invite you to participate in our comp plan planning as well, because it will actually go to that level, and, you know, that kind of an item would be a part of the comprehensive plan for the future. Anyone else? Okay, I thank the public for their comments this morning, and we will do our best to get the answers to the individuals as quickly as possible. So with that, we will move forward to our first presentation this morning, which is a presentation on the proposed fiscal year 2024 general fund budget and trim rate options. And Helena, I think you'll lead the discussion.
Yes. Good morning, Mayor, City Council. Helena Als, your Finance Director. So we're here this morning to present to you the fiscal year 2024 proposed general fund budget and set the maximum millage rate. So I'll go ahead and get it turned over to Raylene Bowman. She will get us started with the timeline and overview of today's presentation. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. As you can see from the timeline, we started this process in February with your annual SAP meetings with staff outlining the priorities that were subsequently adopted on May 2. The external auditors presented the annual audit in March, and staff presented the tenure CIP. During the months of April, May, and June, departments presented their showcases, and finance presented the year-to-date budget results, fund accounting, and revenue restrictions, as well as property tax overview and trim. Next week, July 18th, will be the presentation and resolution to adopt the maximum millage rate. July 25th, we will come back to you with proprietary funds, and on August 8th, with the internal services, capital, and all other fund budgets. August 29th, we will review all fund budgets that were presented in preparation for the September public hearings on the 7th and the 20th. This is an outline of our agenda. We will review the trim timeline, the Avalor of History, the fiscal year 2024 maximum millage rate proposal, as well as the general fund revenues, expenditures, and proposed personnel requests. I will now turn it back over to Quinn Ragsdale.
This is a look at the trim timeline. On June 1st, the property appraiser provided a total assessed value of the non-exempt property. The city of Palm Coast received a preliminary estimate of $8.6 billion. On July 1st, the property appraiser certified the taxable value at $8.7 billion, which represents an increase of 14.41%. Of the 14.41%, approximately 6% or $457 million is attributable to new construction. Within 35 days of the value certification, the current year's proposed maximum millage rate must be set. The assessed millage can be reduced, but it cannot be increased after this point. We will come to you on July 18th, next Tuesday, to adopt the proposed maximum millage rate and to set the date and time for the first public hearing. The first public hearing scheduled for September 7th at 5:15 p.m. here at City Hall will be advertised on the trim notice and sent out by the property appraiser. This hearing is... will set the tentative budget and tentative millage rate. The final public hearing scheduled for September 20th at 5:15 p.m. also here at City Hall to adopt the final budget and millage rate. This graph shows the history of our millage rate compared to our property values from 2019 to present. As you can see, the property values have been increasing, with the last two years increases in the double digits. Council has maintained the millage of $4.6989 for a period of... for 2019 to 2021, and reduced it to $4.6100 in 2022 and maintained it in 2023. This chart shows the history for the last several years for the millage rate, the property values, but it also incorporates receipts collected and population. As you can see, we have been experiencing an increase in property values as well as population.
If I could, if it doesn't throw you off so we don't have to come back to this slide, the three asterisk footnote at the bottom of the page. Helena, you had mentioned that we now have the confirmed numbers. Did I misunderstand?
Yes, we do. We have the certified values from the property appraiser's office, and those have been updated with those numbers.
So... but we still, because of history, hold back, it looks like roughly 4%, which is equivalent to... What kind of a number? Maybe...
So the 96...
A million and a half dol... I'm sorry. A million and a half dollars. And just help us understand why we're being conservative and holding back that number.
Of course. So by statute, we are required to budget 95% of... Of course. So by statute, we are required to budget 95% of Advalorum taxes. So the experience for the city of Palm Coast is that a more realistic number is 96%. It varies between 96 and 96 and a half. Um, so that's a realistic number of what we're going to receive.
So is that just a collection problem? People don't pay, or where does that money disappear to?
I, I don't believe it's a collection problem because we have a really high collection rate here. Uh, I think it's the discount that people receive on an early payment, uh, in November. So that's a 4% discount.
So the, so the discount on paying early is a part of that holdback, that reserve?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. All right. Well, that helps explain it. Okay. So the million and a half dollars isn't appropriate. It's probably a couple of hundred thousand dollars if you were just putting a reserve in there for money that you're not going to get.
Yes. If we were to, uh, budget at a higher number than that range between 96 and 96 and a half, we would be budgeting revenue that we haven't realistically received.
And the reason for my question is as the property values continue to increase, but we stick to that same magnitude of percent, the number gets big. I mean, I was shocked to see that's a million and a half bucks that are kind of, you know, being put in the closet for this budget, which is, you know, enough to fund a program or, or some other thing. But you still feel that it's essential to conservative fiscal policy to reserve that 6%, um, 4%?
That is realistically what we receive. So if we were to budget higher, we wouldn't necessarily be expecting to receive that revenue.
Very good.
Of course. Okay. This is a look at how a dollar is split between the taxing of the agencies for fiscal year 2023. For every dollar in Advalorum tax paid, Flagler County receives 44 cents, the school board 29 cents, the city of Palm Coast receives 24 cents, and the other taxing districts receive 3 cents. So it's important to note the allocation to the city is approximately 24%. So the budget presented to you today is proposing the same mileage rate that was adopted last year at 4.6100. Helena will now review the general fund revenues and expenditures.
So, uh, this is an overview of general fund positions, the total change of 15 full-time staff from fiscal year 2023 to fiscal year 2024. The departments will review the individual positions with council as they present their budgets later on in the presentation. Uh, but of the 15 positions, seven, five are existing positions being transferred from the facilities fund, uh, leaving two new positions requested. Six are for the fire department, two are for parks and recreation, and the other two are for community development. This is a big picture view of general fund revenues. Overall change between fiscal year 2023 adopted budget of approximately 5.7 million or 10.9%. Advalorum, as you can see, is the largest revenue source for the general fund. As Gwen mentioned earlier in the presentation, the city's assessed value has increased by 14.41%, with approximately 6% attributable to new construction. Assuming the same mileage rate from last year of 4.61, we would generate 38.7 million in Advalorum revenues, of which 38.2 would be to support the general fund. The amount attributable to new construction is approximately $2 million, leaving a balance of 2.8 attributable to existing taxable properties. The next category includes the state revenues that the city received, uh, receives from the state. Now, we discussed these in detail at the May 23rd revenue restriction presentations. We are still waiting for revenue projections from the state to complete fiscal year 2024. They are scheduled to be released in July. I checked again this morning. They hadn't been released yet. Uh, so as the state updates their estimates, we'll revise our numbers and update council. The total projected for state revenues is 7.9 million. Uh, we built in moderate increases for fiscal year 2024 for now, but as I just stated, we'll update once we receive the state numbers. But we don't typically experience large increases in these revenues. The next category involves charges for services. These comprise approximately 6.7 million, uh, with 2.3 million related to parks and recreation activities, such as program fees for golf, tennis, pool, rec general. 4 million is related to internal services allocations for the city departments, and the balance is miscellaneous, such as funds received from the state for signal maintenance, the town center, uh, deputy that is reimbursed from the CDD, and lean search fees. The main component to other revenues is interest income, a grant for public safety, and the opioid settlement that we receive on an annual basis.
I'm sorry, just so you don't have to go back. And the reason for the big change, the big delta there is because of that, uh, what we received last year?
The big delta between which ones?
Other revenues. You went from, uh, 683 to 253?
Uh, yes. So the biggest change in there is related to interest income. As you've noticed with the interest rate increases that, you know, the federal government has been doing, um, our short-term investments earn higher. Now, I caution because these are mostly unrealized gains, so you don't actually receive those funds until you, the securities mature. So it's a, it's revenue, but not necessarily cash that gets added to the bank.
Okay. I'll follow up with you on that line because that, that big a change, I'm not quite understanding why it drops off so much in the proposed 2024 budget.
Uh, we don't project for, uh, interest revenue outside of what we actually expect to receiving cash. That's why.
So I'll get with you and ask what they said the reason for, for being less than half of what the prior year was.
Uh, yes. Well, we can give you the history on that, but typically that's not how we, you don't project interest income as operating revenue. That's why you can see the original budget's only 127.
Did we actually, did we actually somehow close those positions to realize the $683,000 of gains?
Uh, yes and no, because some of it's to undo the unrealized losses from the previous year. So it, it's a yes and no. Yep. But we do have a, um, a comprehensive investment policy that is adopted by council, and you have your, uh, investment advisors that are contracted, uh, to run the investments for the city. They were here, I believe, in April and did a comprehensive presentation. Um, we can also provide you with quarterly reports that explain how they're allocated and your earnings.
It's more just a summary explanation for the significant swing from, from, from one budget to the next. We just want to have a good understanding in case it offers us another opportunity somewhere else.
Of course.
I was just gonna say, sweet job to whoever locked in those gains. That's what I was getting at.
So the, you will notice an increase in appropriated fund balance from fiscal year 2023, uh, adopted budget annually and subsequent to the audit being completed and presented to council. We analyze the prior year's available fund balance as part of the budget process and identify uses according to policy for any amounts over the required max. Uh, the details of the proposed usage will be reviewed later in the presentation as we go into detail on the non-departmental budget in slide 56.
And Helena, if I may, on the inter-fund transfers, just from a layman's point of view, why is that not a net zero? In other words, how can you, how can you come out ahead on an inter-fund transfer? Because you're just shifting monies via, from one department to another, right?
Yes. So the, those inter-fund transfers are actually related to pilot, so payment in lieu of taxes. Uh, when we prepare our original budget, you know, we use the estimated number, usually starting with the June 1st that's provided from the property appraiser. When we actually process the transfers, we process them in December after the value adjustment board has closed.
So there's some calendarization?
Actual amount, yes.
There's some calendarization involved?
Absolutely.
Okay, I understand. Thank you.
Okay, fiscal year, sorry, appropriated fund balance. We're still there. Okay, so your fiscal year 2024 appropriated fund balance of 925,000 is to fund the annual contingency to handle fluctuations in revenues and expenditures. That's 550,000, and as we have in the past, and the property tax value adjustment contingency of 200,000, and the remaining 175 are for two items from the fiscal year 2023 budget that will carry to fiscal year 2024, which are a rate analysis for miscellaneous general fund fees that we'll cover on slide 30, and the balance of the update to the comp plan that was just approved by council. Any questions on revenues before we move forward?
Just go back, and I don't mean to take up everybody's questions, but the permits and, uh, fees are projected, not flat, but actually a little bit down. So where does that projection or forecast come from? If we're talking about, the public at large feels that, you know, construction is, is rampant and, and growing, you know, literally every day, and yet we're showing a minor decrease in the collection of, um, permits and fees.
So those are the permits and fees that relate to, uh, planning reviews, not your building permits fund. That'll come later. I believe July 25th is when we're bringing that to council. Uh, we budget on the conservative side, and that's why you see an increase between your adopted of, of 1,612 and then your estimated of 1,724. We adjust it through projections.
And those project-
Because it fluctuates on what the flow of requests coming into your community development department. So we don't necessarily project an increase as much as we adjust it through projections.
The reason I ask is because underlying that are the forecasted increase in population numbers. So the population numbers are heading kind of this way, but these fees and permits are going slightly down. I'm just trying to-
Those are not permits related to the building department.
Okay.
These are-
In, in this, in, in the calendar of this particular budget, this, you're saying this happens well in advance of the actual construction? No?
Yeah.
Well, generally, yeah. So the, you know, the planning department does comprehensive plan amendments, zoning, in advance of-
Way in advance of we're actually going vertical.
Right.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions on revenues before we move forward to expenditures?
Vice Mayor question?
No question.
Okay.
Thank you. So this is a big picture summary of the general fund expenditures. Uh, they'll be covered in the following slides by each department director, so I'll not, not go into any detail on this slide. However, our proposed budget for the general fund is approximately 58.4 million, um, an increase of 5.7 million from fiscal year 2023 or 10.9%. We'll proceed to our general fund expenditures, starting with what we call our administrative services departments. Council should have received the supporting, uh, worksheets with detailed line item requests last week. These was also placed on the city's website, uh, for the public under the fiscal year 2024 budget preparation tile. Lauren Johnston, your assistant city manager, will now review the administrative departments and the sheriff's department budgets.
Helena, I want to thank you and your team for being able to, uh, answer those questions on the fly. Some of them are rather detailed and don't appear on the top level of the information. So thank you for that.
Of course. You're welcome.
Ms. Johnston, please.
Yes. Good morning, Mayor and City Council. Uh, this is a summary of our administrative departments, the proposed budget increase of 8.1% from fiscal year 23. We will go through each department individually, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. The first budget we'll start with is city council with a 33.5% increase is mainly due to, um, increases we are seeing across the organization in our health insurance premiums. Um, as you recall, Brown and Brown presented to city council this information on June 13th. Also included in city council's budget are the costs related to the strategic action plan implementation.
If I could just ask you there, the cost, so we have a, um, the strategic action planning process and the comp plan. So those, some of those dollars are tucked away here under city council. Is that, have they not existed before? And you, is, is that, how did you choose city council for, to land those numbers?
Uh, city council sets the vision and your strategic action plan is the tool to set that visioning strategy. Uh, so that's why it's aligned under your budget. Um, it's also time for us to do the annual citizen survey, and with your, um, review of the comprehensive plan, you typically want to set a, some framework through a facilitator in the strategic action plan to set the next 10 years. Staff has been managing this process with Ms. Bevan for the last 10 years, and it's, it's a good form of practice to bring in an outside facilitator.
So the additional expense here relates directly to the strategic action priority that city council set regarding comp plan and, and the other facilitation that we need?
Yes, Mayor.
Sorry, I, I just want to kind of piggyback on that for clarification. And I had a general question to Personnel Services. You said that does include the jump in the health insurance. Is that true for all of the budget sheets that we'll see today?
Yes.
Okay. As far as the, the strategic action plan, for 2023, it doesn't look like, and maybe I'm just reading it wrong, but it doesn't look like prior council's priorities are included in here. So I'm, I'm a bit confused as to why our priorities would be included in our budget, whereas it doesn't look like from a surface view, it's done like that previously.
So the difference this year is that you'll be completing the comprehensive plan in next fiscal year. So we were proposing to bring in an outside facilitator for those services to help city council align their strategic action plan as part of the comp plan. Instead of it being staff-led and driven, it would be an outside facilitator.
So our priorities, what we've, what we approved a few months ago, the, the cost of those per se are not actually included in our budget, but rather in other budgets?
Correct.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
No, good.
Uh, we will move on to the city manager's office. Uh, the city manager's budget is increasing by 29%, mainly due to a position transfer from the community development department, and this position is the chief of staff.
So the corresponding decrease of percentage will show up on the other side?
Yes, Mayor. Okay. We will move on to the city clerk's budget, which is decreasing by 1.9%, mainly due to alignment of staffing resources and transfer from the city attorney's budget. Also defined in the city clerk's budget is the council priority for evaluating a, hiring a dedicated grant writer or to contract consultants related to grants from federal and state agencies. We'll move on to the city attorney budget, which is increasing by 9.7%, mainly due to the projected CPI increase to the city attorney's contract.
Is that a contractual obligation with the, with the law firm?
The next budget is communications and marketing with an increase of 6%, mainly due to the, um, increases we are seeing across the organization due to health insurance cost premiums. We also have a council priority in this budget of $1,000 for the hosting of town hall-style meetings, and that's included in the budget for communications and marketing. The next budget is human resources, which is increasing by 6.7%, mainly due to, um, increases we're seeing across the organization for health insurance cost premiums. Okay. We'll now move on to our contract for law enforcement services with-
Just before you, you start that one, the 33% increase in the city council, uh, budget items, that facilitator could possibly be assumed to be a one-time budget hit. It's not anticipated for that to be an ongoing expense. I'm assuming that you have in mind that that would be a train-up on how we can- I'm assuming that you have in mind that that would be a train-up on how we conduct this process so that we could then bring it back to City Council to facilitate themselves?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. Sheriff Staley presented to City Council on June twenty-seventh with the proposed increase changes. These increases include a five point three percent COLA, an increase to their contractual step program, the FRS adopted rates, health insurance premiums, and the fully burdened cost of additional three deputies from fiscal year twenty-three. And as you can see, that is a reflected increase of twelve point seven percent.
And those new deputies, again, that's a calendarization, that was something that was approved in the prior budget-
Correct.
And now it's just coming online now, right?
Right, that, we were only budgeting them for the nine months, and for fiscal year twenty-four, they're fully burdened for twelve months. Okay. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Any questions for Assistant Mayor Johnston at first? Thank you for your presentation.
Only question I have, and this might be more for Helena, are there, are there any items that potentially their one-time costs that could be facilitated through our reserves? I know that this is going to be kind of a trim exercise here, setting our trim, but have we identified things that are, you know, single-time use that could potentially be used or could be, you know, funded through a reserve expense?
Yes, so what we, what we prepare is items that are carrying, let's say, from one fiscal year to the other because we weren't able to accomplish. We assume those as already funded, so we do appropriate fund balance. We also do for our contingency, that was set by council a few years back, I don't remember if it was twenty seventeen or eighteen. So that's assumed to have been funded, so it does come out of fund balance. When we do our proprietary funds, items like capital equipment, right, one-time type of expenditures, we will propose, and you'll see that in the detail as we go through.
Okay, understood, thank you.
So Councilman, would you like to see sort of a highlighted list of those items that have come online but were put in the prior year's budget which we're paying for now, or subsequently those that may not hit this year's budget and move forward to next year's budget? In other words, I would appreciate that if it's not too much to know which items-
Yes, I'll give you the detail of what's in appropriated fund balance.
Editive.
That's what you're asking?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I hate to call it a hit list, but that's what I'm going to call it, to look at it more carefully.
Well, I, I can give you the list of what we have in appropriated fund balance. Are you looking for something in addition to that?
No, I think you're just identifying, so the conversations we just had-
Okay.
Throughout your slide presentation, so for example, we talked about the facilitator for the process, things like-
That one is not in appropriated fund balance, but that's something that-
No, I understand, but things like that, that are not likely to be an ongoing expense in future budgets. It's sort of a getting us started so that we, then we can, you know, stand up and take it over ourselves.
Okay.
Okay.
So we'll now move over to my department's budget. As you can see, the largest portion of financial services budget is for personnel services. The decrease is due to the transfer of the business tax functions to the community development department for fiscal year 2024. That specific business tax budget will be covered in slide thirty-nine, but those are two full-time employees, and that's why you see a decrease. Those were the only changes in this budget from last year. We've been working very close with IT, we're focused on the ERP upgrade that was approved by council a couple of years back. We're looking forward to efficiencies that that will create for us in the future, but that's kept us very busy. Now, our department was assigned two strategic action plan priorities, A five as it relates to non-avalorem revenues. We are proposing update analysis to miscellaneous charges for services rates that are supporting the general fund. This has been a goal of the department for a while, since some of these were established over ten years ago. These were part of the funds that were identified to carry from twenty-three to twenty-four at council's direction, so this is something that is in appropriated fund balance because it was already funded in the past, it's just the study didn't take place. So you'll see that in appropriated fund balance. The- Hmm? What?
I, I guess, while you're, while you're, while you're looking there, I'm just going to make a, I'm going to make a comment just, just for myself. So the fifty thousand dollar general fund item to conduct an analysis of new untapped revenue sources to help lessen reliance on residential property taxes, sounds good on paper. City Council, as of a, a recent meeting, is not yet comfortable with the impact something like that might have on the private sector. So I'm just going to throw that out as a question for a future discussion, because until we're comfortable that we wouldn't be stepping into a private sector to exploit untapped revenues, it, it's a circular discussion, it doesn't get anywhere, and it's fifty grand.
Well, I, I understand the point that you're making, Mayor, but I think the ROI, first of all, would be there, but also this isn't just referring to the solar, which is, I think, what you're, which you're alluding to?
Not in general, in other words, so every untapped revenue source-
I'm sorry, I meant EV.
So if it's money, then it's also available to the private sector. I just, what I don't want to do is, I don't want to spend a lot of staff's time if we don't have an understanding amongst City Council members, what flies and what doesn't.
And I think the, I think the bulk of that work has been done already, it seems, because I think what we were looking at was the EV study and then also the franchise fee. So it seems to me that's, for the most part, been accomplished, and I think there's actually representatives today here to speak to us about that. So, I mean, I just don't want to take it off the table completely, I understand the point.
Good.
So if I could just clarify, we have miscellaneous revenues for things like fire inspection fees, lane search fees, some of the fees that come to us from the community development, and some of those were set over ten years ago. So kind of the goal was take all of the miscellaneous that not already addressed through a rate study, right, and have those looked up and brought to today's standards. But we wouldn't go into that project without bringing it to council.
All right, and that's a good definition, that helps separate what I was talking about, good.
Exactly, that's not what we're proposing to do. Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Now, we also presented on May twenty-third other unrestricted revenue sources used by other municipalities, and we will continue to update council annually as part of the budget process. Priority A six relates to setting the millage rate. We did a comprehensive presentation on June thirteenth, reviewing the trim process as well as the millage setting timeline. You heard from Glenn again this morning on the process as well as an update on the certified taxable values that were received from the property appraisers, and we will be back Tuesday for council to set the maximum millage rate, and in September for final millage and budget adoption. Before I move further, any questions on financial services?
This is a little bit philosophical, but I'd like to engage the rest of City Council. So we have some beautifully written language there, millage rate should be revenue neutral for taxpayers. So if I, I have to ask a hard question, so when you speak about fund balances, you're exempting those from this definition, I assume? Meaning that a fund balance does not represent a revenue-neutral result?
The fund balance usage has to be according to policy, so not to fund ongoing operations.
But the fact that we're-
Any item that is one-time, as identified earlier, would be a potential use of fund balance.
But the fact that we are, we are keeping, keeping line items that represent some magnitude of dollars of fund balance, you, like I said, I think you're exempting that from the, from the revenue-neutral, I mean, weigh in anybody if you, if-
I don't know how you exempt it. Either we do it or we don't do it. That's kind of what we agreed to do.
Okay, so these are dollars that are going to cost you in the budget and have an effect on the millage rate that you may or may not spend. In other words, in a, in a pure definition of revenue-neutral, you, you wouldn't have those because they're unassigned. They're, they're going to end up on the plus column in terms of extra money. That's, maybe I'm not clear.
If I may, Elena, based on what A six says, and based on the figures that you've shown us today, how do we accomplish that priority?
Not with the budget that's being presented today. The budget that's being presented today to council assumes the same millage rate as last year.
So, so I guess that's my question.
You would have to cut services.
Well, I don't want us to make that assumption, but I guess my point is, have you all done the calculations to figure out what it is that we would need to do number-wise to make sure that we meet this priority? Based on the updated figures, based on the taxable values that we now have, based on the population projections that we now have, have you all done the calculations to come to us and say, Council, if you want to accomplish this goal, this is what you're looking at as far as the monies that we have to trim in the budget or whatever, whatever we have to work with as far as working with you all, have you all figured out yet what we would need to do to meet that goal?
So your taxes, revenues from existing taxpayers would be approximately two point eight million dollars. You would have to look at reducing the budget by that amount.
So two point eight million is what we need?
If council decided that was the-
So then that's our goal. Is that fair to say that our goal, if we want to meet this priority, which we all agree to, our goal is to reduce our budget by two point eight million?
You would have to reduce the expenditure side.
Right, exactly.
You wouldn't be looking at the budget that you're looking today.
And I, and I ask that because, you know, I've looked at the, the worksheets that were provided to, that were provided to me, I'm assuming based on representations, they were provided to everybody. I've combed through those, and I've talked with our city manager on some suggestions that I have to cut, and I just encourage, you know, as we engage in this process, if this is actually a goal that we want to realistically meet, that we all kind of engage in that tough-
And, and the other side of that is reducing it to two point six, but also finding it in another place that we haven't enjoyed before. In other words, that creates the same balance. In other words, you could pay for those things if you had revenue that was going to appear from a new source.
And that's why we were looking at the franchise fees and things of that nature, sure.
Thank you. So now we will move over to construction management and engineering, and Carl Cody, your director of construction management engineering, will present the department budget.
Yes, good morning. This particular budget represents the general funded staff in the department, which is primarily the, the select staff that work on transportation, park and facility-type projects, architects and engineers and project managers that are in that area of the department. So it's a, it's a small grouping of staff. There are, there are a few items in here that you'll note that there's a big percentage change. One of them, and personnel had to do, you know, as you heard previously, was health insurance costs. The other one was we had a partially funded position this year, and next year would, there'd be, you know, a fully funded position for the entire year. So that was the, the right reason for the change or the increase in the personnel cost. And the operating cost is primarily tied to council priority that we'll see on the next slide. So the, the council of priority that is within this budget is the one tied to the roadway safety item, neighborhood safety, to look at various speed limit, stop signs, various methods that are going to have to be done, where we'd have to contract that out to a consultant, and depending on how comprehensive their analysis is in terms of how many locations they need to study to analyze and determine what type of counts and how many counts and those things, you know, that, that range could, could vary, so that's why there's a big range of dollars there. So rather than just looking at one particular street, we're trying to look at more of a global look across the city, where they can pick certain types of streets that are similar.
And Carl, assuming that you are successful with this priority, this could be also considered an investment, or perhaps, I hate to use the word template, but a model to make additional roadways throughout the community safe if we come up with the right, you talked about speed, you talked about signs, things like that. This is also to cure issues we have throughout the rest of Palm Coast.
Right, it's to help deter the, some of the citizen complaints and work in conjunction with the sheriff's office on addressing, you know, primarily, you know, citizens in the roadway speeding, those sorts of things. There'd be a cost associated more than likely to implement some of those, but though, so this is going to lead to future costs as well, more than likely. Any questions?
Thank you. Vice Mayor, question? Thank you, Mr. Cody.
Thank you, Carl. Now Jason Di Lorenzo, the chief of staff, will now present the economic development and community development division budgets.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council, Jason Di Lorenzo, Chief of Staff. The community development department consists of three unique but connected divisions, all related to community investment. The planning division is entrusted with ensuring all projects are consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, the unified land development code, and provide technical review of site development engineering, zoning requirements, including architecture, flood, floodplain, environmental protection. The division is also responsible for long-range planning and the management of the CDVG program. The building division protects the safety of the public by enforcing the Florida Building Code through intake and processing of permits and plan review and inspection services, and code enforcement division is committed to ensuring the built environment is maintained to the adopted level of service detailed in the Unified Land Development Code and the Code of Ordinances. Code enforcement is, also includes urban fire training and animal control and animal licensing. The department prides itself on providing innovative solutions within the adopted frameworks we work, and we embody the city's mission of delivering exceptional service by making citizens our priority, by providing enhanced communication and treating people as people and not as tasks. Today we'll focus on the general fund budgets related to community development and also economic development. We're going to start with the planning division. We are requesting a budget increase. This includes a, one reclass and one new position. The new position is a planning manager. The division, the planning division-
Excuse me, Jason, how much would that position cost us?
The planning manager position, I think it's fully budgeted a hundred and twenty-five.
Hundred and twenty-five thousand?
Yes, sir. Mm-hmm. The, we have not had a planning manager since twenty nineteen, that's when Ray Tyner was promoted to deputy chief, and the role of the planning manager will be to manage the division as every other division has a manager.
And for posterity, that one twenty-five is all in, right?
The one twenty-five is the salary portion.
Oh, salary?
No, that's fully burdened.
Fully burdened.
Oh, fully burdened, okay.
Um, there are also operating increases of a hundred and twenty-nine thousand three hundred for the comprehensive plan update and associated costs, and there are also a couple of increases related to state-required second-party surveyors, that's directly related to the cost of applicants, but that is also passed on, so we have a high volume of applications which are going to produce Platts. Platts have to be reviewed by second-party surveyors per state law. There's the hundred and twenty-nine three related to the adopted priority. In code enforcement, the chief development officer position is spread between, one-third between planning, code, and building, that's represented here in the salaries. There is also a reclass of one code officer, which is an open position through attrition that we are going to reclass to an assistant manager. That position will help us with citizen outreach and communication, will work with the community development process administrator to modernize the workflows in the code division, and will also supervise the business tax staff that you heard from Helena, that are moving over to community development. Operational increases are minimal in code enforcement. There is an increase in legal services for animal control cases, and, but these are on an as-needed basis, but as our population grows, we have more animals to deal with. And we have a citizen outreach and self-assessment program we're adding for next year that has a few dollars associated with it. And included in the code enforcement budget is three hundred and fifty-seven thousand for contracted services related to public nuisances. Those would be wildfire mitigation, hazardous trees, demolition, removal of, removal of waste or overgrown conditions. These are budgeted in code enforcement, but they're charged back to the property owner who needs those services because they do not remedy on their own. And we collect those up through invoicing, and if they aren't paid through an invoice, then they go on the tax roll.
Mr. Di Lorenzo, it's my understanding that we have a pretty good collection rate for those, right?
Yes, we reviewed twenty twenty-two, and right now we're at about seventy-seven percent collection. Sometimes it takes a little longer because if they go on the tax roll, and then if the taxes aren't paid immediately, we don't collect them till a future tax payment, or perhaps at a closing, or something like that.
And where do we see those revenues when they come back into the city?
They go back into the general fund.
Okay, thank you.
The next worksheet is related to business tax. Helena mentioned that this business tax, the two staff members were, are currently in the finance department, they're going to move to community development, and that's for some operational and customer service improvements that a, that a larger staff can provide some backup and that kind of stuff for when people are out. And then also, there's a zoning function and sometimes a building function as well related to business tax. Now they'll all be housed in, in one department, so we can kind of clean up that process and make it a little bit better. Economic development is a separate division, and we have an increase of $117,000 to support the strategic action plan priorities. $98,000 is for the healthcare targeted industry feasibility study and summit. So we will conduct a study that will tell us our targeted healthcare industries for our area, at which point we will engage those folks and set up a task force or summit, whatever that next piece is, to move that priority forward. And then there's also $183,000 for business expansion and recruitment, which has $100,000 budgeted for potential incentives, and $68,000 for the reformation of the Small Business Development Center through UCF. And then we also are on year three of our rev grant with ground-up, which is roughly $15,000. It'll be based, an actual number based on their taxes paid. And that concludes my presentation. I will take any questions.
So just generally speaking, I think your presentation, more than, I guess, almost any of the others, is aggressive, and my assumption is it's aggressive because you're telling us that with this support, you can smartly manage the growth, which obviously is an outcry from the community. And it seems to me that most of that happens or begins here. Is that, is that a fair statement?
I think that is very accurate, and thank you for that analysis. The planning division right now has more than 50 projects. We have the, the start of the comp plan review underway right now. We have all the work related to expansion of the city to the west and otherwise. So yes, there's, we can see, we are seeing the future and, you know, making the appropriate moves, so we can have this...
So this does include the discussion on how we can increase our tax base as we take advantage of the city properties west of I-95? So that's built into the personnel and the operating expenses that you showed us here?
Yes, that is correct, sir. We're going to have to do a lot of work as that project moves forward with appropriately placing the commercial needs so we can better balance the tax revenue.
Questions?
I just have one more question, sorry. Based on the personnel you're projecting or you're asking for in this budget, will this, in your estimation, will this personnel carry us over for a few years? In other words, can we commit to the public that we won't be looking to add more personnel costs when we're looking at next year's fiscal budget?
Yes, ma'am, I, I think that's accurate. We, you know, we are moving some people around to better deal with our current workload. You know, our zoning reviews related to building permits has slowed slightly, so, but our planning side has not, right? So things are, it's fluid, right? You have planning, building, planning, building, right? So you mentioned earlier, Mayor, that there's, you know, changes going on in vertical construction. So we're moving our, our pieces around, and we're looking to the future with our new planning manager to be able to accommodate that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Chief Barry Hill will now present the fire budget.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Kyle Barry Hill, Fire Chief, Palm Coast Fire Department. Your fire department plays a large role in executing the city council-focused area of safe and reliable services. In April of this year, we presented an overview of the fire department detailing where we have been, where we are today, and how we are moving forward. We reviewed our belief that effective fire service provision is the result of a three-legged stool, proper station locations, reliable apparatus and equipment, and well-trained staff with the right culture appropriately deployed. The fiscal, the fiscal year '23 budget reflects needs associated for apparatus and staffing. Two replacement fire engines and an attack truck are on order, keeping our fleet ahead of expensive and predictable failure points from both a financial and a safety perspective. Two new firefighter positions were intended to support minimum staffing and control overtime, which they did for two-thirds of the fiscal year. However, after receiving word that our partners needed to redeploy staff protecting the Seminole Woods and Quail Hollow neighborhoods, that staff is now making up the core of what will become Engine 26, and is currently protecting the Station 26 future, the future Station 26 territory. This year's budget reflect requests the need to support level of service in a previously underserved area on an increased timeline. It is well, it is well-established that Palm Coast Fire Department needs to be south of State Route 100, and that the county's airport station is not a permanent solution to protecting that neighborhood. Thanks to our servants in Tallahassee and five million in legislative appropriations, we are closer than ever to a solution that best serves our citizens, Seminole Woods Fire Station 26. Today, city firefighters protect this neighborhood from the airport fire station, but the current rate of overtime consumption is unsustainable from both a financial and a human perspective. Personal services requests reflect the need for an additional six firefighters who will make up the core of Station 26 in two years. Our PCFD general fund budget requests reflect the need to provide the staff to run in this neighborhood. Operationally, this occurs at the expense of a dedicated ladder company, from whom the remaining staff for this apparatus were taken. The total salary increase for the personal request in fiscal year '24 is approximately $320,000. This budget reflects no new fleet suppression purchases, and we expect to present a multi-year plan for how we save for fire suppression fleet later this calendar year. And the station location leg of the stool will be addressed later in the budget process during the capital planning part of our budget process. Any questions?
It's the same old question. You know, hiring in today's market is difficult, so you've got six, six hires over two different phases, I guess. So I guess the question is, how realistic is it that you'll be able to identify those folks and bring them on board according to your timeline?
Well, we've decided to start advertising today. If we don't have a position, we'll just take the ad down if these positions don't get approved, but we've already begun the process for onboarding. Although the Fuller Fire Chiefs just published a study about firefighter retention and hiring in Florida, and so we've done an amazing job at retention, and we struggled some with hiring in this year, but that actually ended up helping us because we're spending, we've spent more overtime over the last little while, and we have to for the rest of this year to get through this transitional period with the Seminole Woods neighborhood. But we believe that we can continue to hire, we can support hiring three twice over two six-month periods. We believe that we can go ahead and get that done. We're doing things different than before. We're using a recruitment model rather than an NFL-style model, but we've been, we were successful recently, and we think we can be again.
And you have an apprenticeship program, which I assume you'll hopefully draw some number of new members from there?
Yes, sir. We essentially dumped the bucket out, right? So we're trying to refill it, and it has holes in it, but we're trying to refill that. But our, over the last probably six years, we've averaged about four hires a year based on attrition and things of that nature. And this apprenticeship model was able to support that. But the growth hires that we're doing, we've really struggled to catch up with. But we have, we're restructuring some things associated with that, but we love that model. It's actually recommended by the United States Fire Administration that fire departments consider a model like that. We were already there before they made the recommendation. And so we're going to continue to try and pour time, effort, and energy into that and make an investment in really, you know, local young people who are interested in being a part of the fire service and trying to find people who are connected to our community and fall in love with the fire service the way many of us did.
And the reason I ask, because, you know, if you get four of your six, that's a 20% savings in the budget, but I certainly, you know, would not want to go counter to your response times or all the other metrics that you use to run your department. I just want to know that you feel comfortable that you'll get these folks in.
Well, yes, sir. You know, so what's increased is the minimum staffing daily. So what we're asking for is to make sure that we're able to make that minimum staffing number without, you know, expending overtime. So it's, it's not exactly a one-to-one, but it's very similar to that. And then that doesn't take into account both the human costs and additional capacity. So in order for us to provide the same level of service to the neighborhood that we're now serving that we haven't served for 20 years, we do have to increase, we've had to increase our minimum staffing level to do that, supporting it currently through overtime that's funded through kind of vacant positions that we took a little while to hire in the current year. But that's, that's, if we got four of the six, it would have a direct correlation to what we would expect to spend in overtime in the next year.
Very good. Thank you for that answer. Any other questions for the chief?
I have none, thank you, chief.
Thank you, chief.
I just have a few questions, Mayor, sorry. First, I want to commend you on your retention rate and also the apprenticeship program. I know a lot of families that have been directly impacted in a positive way by that. And also on your ongoing budget efforts. I know when I received your budget worksheets early on, they were extremely detailed down to what, you know, some of your bottles are going to cost you, and I appreciate that. My question is, would you hire, so you were, during your statement, were saying that these six new hires are going to be for Fire Station 26, which I think you stated is going to be open in 2026, best of projection?
Let me clarify that before we get further into the question, if you don't mind. The staff that's running out of Fire Station 26 is what we're hiring now, but we're running that staff today. We're running that staff out of what we're calling Engine 29 out of the airport fire station. We've increased our minimum staffing because we've increased engine companies by one. We had a ladder company that was a regional response company. We really believe in that truck, and we're going to work to prove that again to you and to come back to that level of service in the city. But essentially, this, this budget reflects a reduction of that operational component, the ladder truck, because we're, we're doing something new in that southern response area. So Station 26 engine, this hires that today. What we're asking for hires that engine, and it's running right now. If you drive by the airport, there's a blue fire truck there. So that's what we're doing today. And so there's not going to be essentially future needs to staff Station 26. We'll be in a better location than what we're currently in right now. But there's not future staffing required for Station 26. What there will be is future staffing required if we choose, if we choose to return to the model where we have a regional response ladder company.
So these new firefighters that you're asking to start October 1st of this year, those will be immediately needed? We need those right now in our fleet?
Yes, ma'am. Currently, we're consuming overtime at essentially $77,000 a month. We had a month there, there was a little bit more than that. But we're consuming overtime about $77,000 a month. With the, with the hire of these firefighters, we'd reduce that by $30,000 a month. So the overtime budget or the salary budget would going to be increased one way or the other. The salaries that we're asking for are approximately $320,000 in the fiscal year. The overtime that we project we would need if we didn't do this is $300,000.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, chief. Matt Mansell, Director of Public Works, will present the streets maintenance budget.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Matt Mansell, your Director of Public Works. For FY '24, Public Works Streets Division is proposing to move five positions from the facilities landscaping budget into the streets division. We've done this through a thorough analysis of outsourcing our fire station and utility landscaping processes through partnerships with those departments. So with these five positions moving into the streets division, we would be aligning that with our five-year strategic plan and looking at our future requirements over the next two to three fiscal years to make sure that we could cover down on those positions and the requirements that we're currently projecting for growth over those next three years. We've also been able to reduce overtime and eliminate our temporary higher positions through that process with this new manning, and we've been able to hold the line on the majority of our operating and expenses with only moderate increases that are due to chemical and material cost increases. And through aligning that outsourcing process, we're adding the city hall landscaping maintenance rotation to the streets division. So there are slight increases in material costs, more of a transfer from what was the facilities landscaping budget into the streets operating budget. Our capital outlays also include replacing a couple of fountains along State Route 100 on the I-95 interchange, as well as, I think you've heard all the other divisions say, there has been drastic increases in healthcare costs and benefits costs. So that's reflected mostly in personnel services. So you can see about a 5% increasing, increase in operating outlays, and the rest is that increase in personnel costs this year.
I'm sorry, just explain to me again the reason for the, the transfer of the positions into the general fund?
Yes, sir, of course. So we did an analysis to see what it was currently costing us to perform facility landscaping for our fire stations and all of the utility sites, well sites, lift stations in-house as we've been doing versus if we hired contractors to come in and do it for us. And what we found was, we could see a significant savings by, by outsourcing that. So we got with our fire department and our utility department to kind of analyze that further, everybody was amenable to the transition. While it's not a one-for-one dollar savings, it is a drastic savings in, you know, just the expenditures, outlays that we'll see between if we perform those in-house versus outsource.
So as Mr. Mansell, City Manager, so what I would look for, probably not obviously in this budget cycle, but going forward, so he's taking advantage of some economies of scale by moving these folks from one area to another. I think that makes good sense. But there's also a consolidation of your utility facilities, which is a huge project, which has been a part of our process for some time. So I would be looking in the future for those, for economies of scale related to that concentration of facilities up on US-1 there. So just to keep in the back of your mind, I'll ask you about that, you know, in a future, not this budget, in a future budget.
Of course.
I just want to understand this.
Yes, sir.
You're moving five people, correct?
Correct.
Then you're outsourcing, using contractors to do their jobs.
Correct.
So we're now have an expense of the contractors, and yet we're still retaining the same five people doing something else.
So...
It's like we're hiring five new people. Is that correct?
On the surface level, I could see where it looks like that, however, so we've been able to accomplish a couple of different things. We did have new position requests that we were going to put in the budget to cover down on expanded roadways, some detail work that was added, so we're no longer requesting new positions, so that covers down on it.
In a sense, you are requesting...
Correct, so that covers down on a couple of these positions. In addition, instead of cutting positions overall on our staff, we know that we're going to have requirements that are necessary, FY '26, FY '27. We've made the commitment to utilize these personnel to cover down on those known future needs that are in our strategic plan, so that we would not have new requests within the streets division for the next couple of fiscal years. Also, we see a drastic decrease in the operating expenditure, so just to give you, I don't have exact numbers in front of me for all of my budgets, I only have the streets division, so I apologize, but the facilities landscaping budget...
Wait, just, I understand something. You can't tell us how much this outsourcing is going to cost?
No, sir, we did. We went out to bid. I don't, I don't have the numbers in front of me, so I'll give you rough numbers, is what I'm trying to say.
How about you come back with the numbers?
I can do that as well.
That would be more helpful.
But I can tell you, it's about a million-dollar savings.
Million-dollar savings?
Overall, overall, yes.
But you're hiring five new people, in a sense.
At a 300, so that's after deducting that $353,000 in personnel costs for those five people. It's still, so my facilities landscaping budget was $2.7 million last year. After the outsourcing costs for the contract service, the cost savings from operating and moving these people included, it's about a million-dollar difference annually.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. Mansell, where were, what fund were these, these other positions, what were they previously in?
I'm sorry?
Was it the enterprise fund? I mean, what fund?
It was. It was an enterprise fund within our facilities division.
Okay, thank you.
An internal service fund.
Okay, so...
Sorry, internal service.
So I applaud, I applaud the initiative to decrease the total impact on the budget by a significant number, and I realize it's complicated, you're moving from A to B and then hiring people as well, but at the bottom of all of that is significant savings in the budget, so I appreciate that.
Yes, sir, thank you. Any other questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Matt. James Hurst, Parks and Recreation Director, will now present the... will now present the budgets for the Parks and Recreation Division.
Before he starts, and Vice Mayor, just to finish up on your question, because I don't want it to be forgotten for the, for the next, when we get together, or City Manager can help me with this. So the five positions that are being moved, okay? I just need a kind of a summary idea of who's picking up whatever their responsibilities were. So those, those folks were being moved into the general fund, but their job function is not, it's just an administrative numerical move?
Correct.
It's not a change in actually the, the labor that's being produced?
No, it's actually, um, filling in the gaps that exist today, not leaving gaps.
Okay. So, okay. And again, I apologize. So we will end up having five people plus the, the consulting people. We'll save money overall and the job performance for the entire department will increase. I mean, that's a magic formula. I like that. If we could blueprint that through the rest of the budget, I'd be delighted. So we'll, we'll keep it. I'm going to ask some more about it. Let me think about it some more. I just need to make sure I understand that. Fair enough, Vice Mayor? I think that's you asking the same question too. Okay. Sorry.
Uh, no worries. Uh, good morning, Mayor, City Council, James Hurst, Director of Parks and Recreation. Uh, so Parks and Recreation is consisted of five separate budgets. We have Parks and Recre, Parks and Recreation General, the Aquatic Center, the New Southern Recreation Center, Palm Coast, Palm Coast, Palm Harbor Golf Club, and then also lastly Parks Maintenance. So we'll go through each one, um, and then we'll just kind of talk about for each budget. So our Parks and Recreation, um, we're looking at an increase of about 6.6%. Um, this is for us to continue our quality programs and diverse programs, uh, throughout the city and for our residents. You know, we hit toddlers all the way up to seniors. Um, some of our increases you may see would mainly due to utilities, uh, from water and electricity and that contains all our parks, um, and our community center as well. And then we've looked at fulfilled, uh, field trip admissions. We've seen a little bit of increase with that and then also some buses as well to get to the field trips. Um, so that is Parks and Recreation. The Palm Coast Aquatic Center, um, is, this budget, uh, reflects our continuing of year-round operations for the residents. Uh, we, we've seen a little bit of increase in our propane, water, electricity and chemicals. Uh, but, you know, with one benefit of us being open year-round was, you know, we were able to have a very good staff retention and training. So not, when it comes to February, March, we're not scrounging to find lifeguards. We have lifeguards on, on ready to go pretty much for the summer season. Uh, so, and then our aquatics classes and programs are very successful as well during this time. Uh, we, multiple comments of, you know, how good it was to have this pool open year-round.
Mr. Hurst, may I stop you for a moment? I had a question with regards to the Aquatic Center. I saw in your budget worksheets that the cost of your chemicals actually reduced. And I wasn't sure if that would, because across the board, everybody else, it seems like their chemicals are increasing. So I was curious to figure out what it is that you all were able to accomplish.
Uh, we, um, I believe, our, our projected was about $10,000 for chemicals and $11,000 for the chlorine. And we were proj, projected to hit that again.
Okay.
We projected to hit it this year and then we, what we projected, we put in for next year as well.
So they stayed constant then?
Yeah.
So, okay. It, it's just confusing and I, I, that's great. I'm not complaining about it. But I'm just curious as to how we're seeing chemical increases in all the other budgets, but for some reason these have stayed. And is it just because of your projections? They've stayed constant or?
Uh, yeah, we, we, you, what we projected was a little bit higher than what we, uh, what we projected last year. I believe it was nine and 10, I believe it was. So it was nine for, uh, chemicals and it was 10 for chlorine. And then we, so we bumped it up a little bit for that in our projections.
And then going back to the Parks and Rec operating expenditure, it's a pretty big jump for the 91,000. Can you just explain that a little bit more?
Yeah, it was mainly, um, we looked at utilities. Uh, we increased those for, so all our utilities, like including water and electricity, uh, for the community center, then we looked at all, all the parks and parks are pretty much underneath that budget line as well. Um, a couple, we, as I said, field admissions went up a little bit for us. Field trip admissions into some of the cool areas that the kids go to. Uh, then we also, some buses went up a little bit as well. And then we did some training and external, uh, training for our staff as well. Went up a couple of thousand there too, so.
Okay, thank you.
My own, my only comment was potentially the chemicals. Was that, uh, any type of accounting or anything because of Holland Park would not having to service the splash pad?
Uh, no, uh, that, that splash pad would come out of the Parks Maintenance Budget. Yeah, not the pool, yeah.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, and then we'll get into the new, uh, Southern Recreation Center. So Parks and Recreation is looking for quite a bit of an increase, 53.7%. Um, that is just due to the expanded operations of the new center. Uh, we are looking for two customer service representatives to start in April. Uh, and then, uh, in, in line with some of our staff coming on, uh, we looked at some of the utilities that would be, being increased as well. Um, and then with our customer service representatives, we would look to enhance our customers, customer service, tournament logistics. They would help with assist in facility management and obviously with facility management. Um, and then, yeah, and then we looked, some of our pickleball programs and events went from Parks and Recreation into this budget as well.
So for these, um, two new personnel, if the Southern Rec Center, if the construction is not, if it's delayed for some reason, will we delay the hiring of these two new customer service representatives?
Uh, it, it possibly, possibly could. Um, right now it is on, on time, that project. Um, we would like to get them in and train too, just before, before we open full-time for the residents as well.
And I can understand that. I just don't want us to be paying for people to be sitting idle.
Yeah, yeah. No, we're, uh, training is a big part and when we open, so we're ready to go as soon as we're open full-time.
What's the cost of those two positions?
Uh, I believe they're about 53, fully voted, uh, it's on here, so. I think it's... Sorry. Uh, 53, 762 for...
Plus benefits?
Yeah, fully voted, yeah. Both of those positions.
That's just the salary cost that you're...
No, fully voted.
Fully voted, yeah, yep. Any other question?
So where, the, the revenue side of the Southern Center? Elena, where does that show up? That's on a different?
It, oh, sorry.
Is that projected at this point in time?
It, it's through the tennis center at the moment.
It's through the tennis?
Yeah.
So I would look at, look at that line item.
Mm-hmm, for the revenue, yeah.
For the next budget year.
And so, yeah.
Uh, so yes, those support the general fund, charges for services, Parks and Recreation line of the revenues. So that's where we project golf charge.
Can you show us?
Yeah.
We use the term ROI a lot, so your, your expense versus your revenue, can you give me a...
Uh, so currently the tennis center, we're look, uh, um, believe it's about 60 to 70% cost recovery for the current tennis center. Um, I believe, I looked yesterday, our revenue is over about 175 or 173, somewhere around that.
And your forecast for the new facility is what, what percentage of recovery?
Um, I had, uh, we, I think about 200 plus, I think. I'm just off the top of my head.
Is it conceivable to think that once this center is up and running for a while, it could be 100% recovery? Is that in the realm of possibility?
That's the goal. That's the goal.
What's that?
That's hopefully would be our goal, yeah.
That's what I want to hear. Thank you.
Uh, then we'll move on to the Palm Harbor Golf Club. Um, we actually saw a little bit of a decrease in this one at 2.7%. Uh, that's mainly just due to us getting our full fleet of golf carts last year and that wasn't reflected in this, in this budget. Uh, but there are some little bit of operation expenditures that we're looking to have is, uh, the back lot behind the clubhouse. Uh, there's, it's a bit of a tripping hazard, so we're going to put some dirt and grade it and try and get that a little bit more safer for the public to use. But overall, yeah, just a decrease of about 2.7%.
So is there a net, there's a small net positive related to the golf course, correct?
Correct, yeah. There was lots of...
And your, the de, okay, the decrease in expense is not going to affect the chance for that to continue? That we, we, I don't want to use the word profit, that we, we more than 100% recover our costs on the, uh, on the amenity?
Uh, so, repeat that one, sorry?
So you're reducing the expense budget there is not going to change our continued recovery of more than 100% of our costs over there?
No change, yeah.
And that place is popping. It's very, it's even difficult to get a, a tee time there.
Yeah, I just want to go backwards on it.
Oh, I hear you, yeah.
So you said that the decrease is because we fully replaced the golf cart fleet? And that was at a cost of about 1.5 million?
I'm not, I can get through that number. I'm not 100% sure what that one, what it was, yeah.
How long are we projecting that those golf carts will be good to not be replaced again?
They're on a rotation for about three years, so I think...
Three years rotation?
Yeah. Uh, so I think next rotation, I believe, might, would probably be next 25, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Oh, I got, just one more, yeah. Sorry, and we just have, uh, last but not least, we have, uh, Parks and Recre, uh, Parks Maintenance. Um, so at this budget, uh, we continue to operate and maintain what we have, uh, which came out of our Parks Master Plan, was maintaining what we have, which we reflected in this budget here. But we also reflected a little bit of the expansions that are coming along with Lehigh Trailhead, uh, the Southern Rec Center, uh, and then also the waterfront kayak launch. So we reflected some increases there to do with the small and large dog park coming to, uh, to Lehigh, restroom cleaning, rubbish pickup, um, and then also the community gardens. Um, and, yeah, and that's, that's all we have for Parks Maintenance.
And I may be in the wrong spreadsheet here, but do you have money there to once and finally repair the zip line so that it works most, if not all of the time?
Yes, uh, we just ordered a part and we're fixing that at the moment. It's...
I understand your challenge because you've got adults that weigh more than the zip line can carry, which are abusing the, uh, the feature.
Yep.
But it is a constant complaint and of a concern to those that use the park. So you're aware of it and you've got it built in here to make it right?
We usually, if we have to, if we order a piece of equipment for it, we'll order it, we're, we're order two. So if, if it goes down, it's good to go next.
All right. Thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Do you have one more slide?
Oh, sorry, I have a couple more slides, yeah. Uh, so we do have, uh, some adopted, uh, SA, uh, Strategic Action Plan priorities. So we looked at the town center, uh, to promote home and arts and culture. Um, and then this 100,000 would be coming out of the Capital Projects Fund. Our other priority is identifying local recreation demands and that's prioritizing our projects and that will be coming to you with the Parks Master Plan August 8th and then again on September 19th. Uh, then we had, the next one is the Community Center Park in which we heard about, uh, I think it was two weeks ago, three weeks ago now, uh, which we'll come back to council for that one. And then we're always encouraging residents to learn about community and our history. Uh, we continue to work with the Palm Coast Historic Society on a daily basis and we continue to support their programs and their needs. And that is it for Parks and Recreation.
So you're socking away 100,000 dollars on that priority. Can you be any more specific over the course of the calendar year? What would you actually be spending that on?
Uh, it'd be probably, uh, be design contracts, uh...
Only because I'm not aware that we have even a location. I mean, what we have is a dream, but not much more than that. I'm just concerned about locking out 100,000 dollars and really not having a, uh, you know, an alphabet to spend against it yet.
Yeah, I believe it's coming into, it's in the, could be reflected maybe in the Capital Improvement Fund pretty soon and...
Okay, I'll make a note for myself to follow up on that. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to agree with you on this. Concerned about that 100 grand too.
Okay, thank you.
I'll make a note, good.
Thank you, James. We will now cover the non-departmental budget for the general fund. So there are several components to this budget and we will review them separately. We will start with the fiscal year 2023 estimated budget. The increase in inter-fund transfers from the original budget of 964,495 is the proposed transfer of fund balance as per policy of 2.5 million to the Capital Projects Fund. An additional transfer can be used for the Maintenance Operations Center as identified priority for that fund. We are also proposing a transfer to the Disaster Reserve Fund of 1 million. The additional transfer can be used to adjust the balance to approximately 4.2 million. We ran an analysis of reimbursable cost incurred for Hurricane Irma and applied an inflation calculator determining the need for an additional $926,000 in today's dollars. For fiscal year 2024, we are proposing the contingency for revenue and expenditure fluctuations as well as value adjustment board adjustments as we have done in the past. We are still waiting for revenue estimates from the state as well as finalizing department budgets. But as presented today, we have 944,584 dollars available for council additional consideration. We will need guidance as to the direction to take.
And those two dashes there, just re, define them again for me, please, at the bottom of the slide? Under fiscal year 2024?
Okay, so fiscal year 2023, that's you're using your fund balance reserves.
Yep.
So you wouldn't want to have that for fiscal year 2024. So what happens is, once we close 2023, the auditors come in, they do their financial audit. We draft the financial statements, those get presented to council and then we take that fund balance as identified and bring it to you in the fiscal year 2025 budget process.
So it doesn't represent a zero. It's a placeholder until you're ready to bring it forward.
It would be zero for fiscal year 2024 until we bring you 2025's budget. We don't project...
And you can't estimate it?
What we would have next year? No, we don't project into what we would transfer.
Only because it's, it's a significant number. I mean, it's, historically, I assume the magnitude has been similar over the years, right? I mean, in 2023, it was three and a half million bucks, right?
That is your fund balance transfer. It's three and a half million for those particular purposes. We only transfer when there are funds available.
Right.
Above the fund balance policy. So we don't project to have savings to transfer in the future.
You don't? Okay. All right, that, that was really my question. Okay.
Got you. No, no, we don't.
That's that neutral budgeting again, right?
That is correct. So basically what you have today is that 944,000 goes above what was presented in the department's budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Elena, when you say available for council consideration, can you expand on that a little bit more? I mean, what are, what are we really considering robustly here?
If you have additional expenditures or additional programs, um, basically the department's budget requests after they were, uh, reviewed by the city manager came in at 944,584 lower than the revenues.
So can we consider this a surplus?
If you want to call it a surplus, unused funds at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Unassigned funds at this point, I guess would be the proper...
And are we properly funding all of our contingencies at this time?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this is a look at our millage options. The fiscal year 2023 adopted rate was 4.6100. The rollback rate is 4.2570. The majority vote is 5.6405 and a two-thirds vote would be 6.2046. The maximum proposed millage rate is 4.6100 to be set at the next business meeting on July 18th for adoption. We want to remind council that you will be approving the maximum millage rate. The rate can be reduced as we proceed with the budget process, but it cannot be increased beyond the rate you establish next week. So in cl...
I, I just want to be clear. If we could go back, because I know we have new members of council here and everything. For us to be revenue neutral, we would, the rollback rate would be 4.2570. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
My question is, are there two and a half million dollars worth of items that could be used, uh, or could be funded through our reserve funds? Just like a general ballpark question, just so that, because we're talking about revenue, revenue neutral and there's two different ways to look at it, right? You know, trying to fill that revenue from somewhere else just for the cost of argument, um, or for the sake of argument from our reserves, um, for us to be able to fulfill, you know, this inequality between the 4.6100 and the, uh, 4.2570. Um, are there two and a half million dollars worth of items that could be paid for with our reserves?
Uh, not the way the budget is structured, no.
About 2.4. Do I hear 2.4 million dollars that could be? No? About 2.4. Do I hear 2.4 million dollars that could be? No? Okay.
Elena, I would like to see if I could, and I spoke with Ms. Bevan about this yesterday, the fund balances for all, currently what we have in our fleet allocation funds. Because I see a very large line item for all of these. And even with speaking with Mr. Hurst, it sounds like we just replaced our golf carts, but we have a Palm Harbor Fleet Replacement Allocation Fund of $314,000. So I think there can be some real cost savings there. So if you all could get us those balances for each department that has a fleet allocation fund, I'd appreciate that.
Yes, absolutely. So our fleet fund is where, once we purchased a piece of equipment, we start paying ourselves back for its replacement in the future. It's been a very successful program. We have run into struggles with the fluctuations that have happened in the economy and the price increases that we've experienced over the past 24 months. That's why you will see on some department budgets additional transfers to meet the replacement cost. It's not something that's happened in the future. You know, that's happened in the past. It has unique to the current two budget seasons, but that has, that's definitely a factor as why you see large amounts for replacements. Typically, we were able to purchase the same type of equipment with our projections and what was in the fund.
And I understand that. I appreciate the foresight and the planning that comes into kind of building these funds up. But I also recognize that maybe we need to stretch these pieces of equipment or even our white fleet a little bit further in order to save tax dollars. So that's why I'm just asking for the funds and also kind of a where we're at type of timeline as far as when we do project having to replace certain pieces of equipment or apparatus, for instance, for our fire station, things like that.
Yes, of course. And I believe that Public Works Department has a fleet presentation to council that will come in next month, August 9th, if I'm not mistaken. So that could be part of the detail that we bring back to council.
Thank you.
So were you thinking, did you want to see a schedule if you increased the timeline by a year? How many dollars that might be? I think that that's, you know, and then there may be some other items like that. But there'd be a savings involved with that, of course.
Or even being able to, based on the fact that, depending on what's in the funds, because we don't, I don't know right now.
Right.
You know, if, for instance, Mr. Hurst said they want to be able to replace golf carts every three years. But if we've got enough in there, maybe we can skip a year or two of that allocation. Correct.
Extend that, just like sometimes we extend hiring. So we, instead of hiring them today, you wait six months or you save whatever that is. Okay. I think that would be a good piece of information. If, if you can share that with, with city council, that would be great. I don't see any other questions for you at this time.
Okay. In closing, we want to remind public that access to this presentation, as well as the budget worksheets and previous presentations are available by clicking the Budget Preparation tile on the city's website. As a reminder, we will be back next Tuesday, July 18th, to adopt the maximum millage rate. This completes our presentation.
And I would just make one note for those that are reviewing this probably for the first time, that each budget that is directly related to a strategic action priority is so noted on the spreadsheet that's available online. So if you're looking at numbers, you can relate it directly to the, the vision that city council has put forward for staff to, to price out, basically. And that appears on your spreadsheets. So a good reference back and forth. So you're not trying to cut things that you just said you wanted to emphasize by making it a strategic action priority. All right. Ladies, thank you. I thought the presentation was extremely well done and you fielded the questions exceptionally well. So thank you.
And thank you to the rest of our staff as well.
Thank you.
We'll now move to the next item of presentations, which will be the Flagler County Housing Services. And that's on the results of the Flagler Housing Forum, which was held on April the 21st.
Good morning, Mayor, members of city council. Jose Papa for the Community Development Department. Also with me here today is Jackie Gonzalez, who is our Housing Program Manager. And to my left is Devery Paradowski, who is the Flagler County Housing Manager. She's here with us today, basically to provide us with just a quick summary of a recently held forum within, within the county. And that was the, as you can see here, a community-wide housing forum, as you remember. Or you might be aware, that was a forum that was held for the entire county. Invitations were sent out to all municipalities and various stakeholders. And it was there basically to discuss the housing issues we have within the county. With that, I will turn it over to Ms. Paradowski.
Thank you. I'm Devery Paradowski with Flagler County Housing Services. And I am here to give you some valuable insight about the input that the stakeholders had at this forum without any request for actions or responses from the council. So the forum was a result of a recommendation of the Joint Flagler County City of Palm Coast Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. They recommended this forum during their annual report. And as staff was preparing the forum, Governor DeSantis signed into law the Live Local Act, which was one of the most significant pieces of legislation impacting housing since the passage of the Sadowski Affordable Housing Act of 1992. That Live Local Act is designed to allow local governments to encourage the development of affordably priced housing with the private sector being the primary vehicle for that. Under the act, some of the state funds were increased through sale. Our ship funds that we receive locally are recurring. And you can learn about this through floridahousing.org, FLhousing.org. That's our state-appointed technical advisor. So with this forum was, we had 68 participants. And they were in, they were in attendance to presentations. It started with a opening speech from all of the elected officials. We, so we heard from Flagler County's Chair Hansen and we heard from Mayor Alvin of the City of Palm Coast. We also heard from Mayor Robinson of the City of Benel. And we also heard from Commissioner Bell Hummer from Flagler Beach, who is a longtime committee member of the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. Then participants also heard from human services and housing services staff from Flagler County on rent and affordable housing trends. And then they also heard from planning staff from each of the jurisdictions, from Palm Coast, Flagler Beach, Benel, and Flagler County. It culminated with a 45-minute presentation on the Live Local Act by CEO Ashad Nesbit of Florida Housing Coalition. And so during that presentation, the participants did learn and noted some of the provisions that impact local government. One of them was the surplus lands provision. So by statute, cities and county governments were required to, by resolution, review a list of lands that they hold in surplus to determine which ones would be suitable for affordable housing. Now, under the statute, they're required to be posted on the website. And which, by the way, was one of the recommendations that we brought to you from the committee back in November. They recommended that those lands be posted on the website. Now it's a requirement and the act now encourages governments to create a process that's clear and discernible for developers of affordably priced housing. There are some preemptions under the act that are worth noting. So those preemptions for developers that are, have 40% of the units that are considered to be affordably priced, they can preempt zones for industrial, commercial, and mixed use. They can also preempt density and height. There are some restrictions to that. And then we also wanted to note, because the participants from the forum noted infrastructure as being a really important factor for them, that there was expansion of the Job Growth Grant Fund through the state, which allows local governments to expand infrastructure to improve capacity for workforce housing. So the, after they participated in the nine round tables, what we learned is that all of the participants' tables mentioned the, the desire to have inter-municipal collaboration between the municipalities across all of the priorities that they determined. They had a lot of priorities and notes, but these were the top four. They wanted to see an improvement in infrastructure. They noted that access to economic opportunity was important, so the development near economic hubs was important. They also wanted to see the infrastructure for transportation, water, and soil be improved. Of course, under economic development, many of the citizens recognized the need to prioritize job growth. So they wanted to see a lot of jobs and to have their local governments access additional forms of funding to keep that funding local in their communities. The third one, under the comprehensive plan, we do know that luckily the City of Palm Coast and municipalities are looking to get stakeholder input. But we did learn that not only reviewing the comp plan, but land development code was important. And the recommendation and the priority was to maybe get input from builders as stakeholders to determine the regulatory barriers, not only to developing affordably priced housing, but to consider some of the diversity and options that would improve, those options to citizens that would be naturally affordable. And then under the surplus lands, because the citizens learned about the surplus land provision and an expansion under the act, they wanted to see a process because they were wanting to make sure that nonprofit developers and other private developers of affordably priced housing could access those lands and knew how to access them. So at the end, we do want to thank the elected officials that did provide an opening speech to everybody to kick this off. And we wanted to thank the staff, the planning officials that also provided insight into this. And it was the Affordable Housing Advisory Committee that made this recommendation. They helped facilitate this, this forum for us. So we did want to let everyone know that this is a Joint Flagler County, City of Palm Coast Affordable Housing Advisory Committee. And they provide recommendations to both of the governments. And these meetings are open to the public. And they are held on the fourth Tuesday of every month at 3:00 PM at Flagler County Emergency Operations Center. And that, that concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions you may have.
I, I thank you. I have taken the time to read through the recently signed legislation. And I think that many folks would agree that, number one, the governor's legislation was not written to work specifically with a, a city of Palm Coast as an example. It really is for a different type of an area. So the reason I bring that up, there's also a lot of, I'll call them holes or unknowns in the current legislation, which has to be worked out, which is understandable with new legislation. City of Palm Coast would very much like to participate in these initiatives. But quite frankly, I for one don't know how. So what I guess I'm asking you is, will you be the champion that can bring specific projects? Not concepts, projects to the city so that we can decide on whether we can move forward with them? Because we would love to participate, but I'm unclear as to how we can at this time.
Yes, and so the Advisory Committee, they provide recommendations. They'll create general recommendations every year. So they would be a vehicle for staff to review the information that they provide and to get some of the research to, to get that. So it wouldn't be specific, those, those priorities that the citizens had were pretty standard. Job growth, infrastructure, so we'll just keep that in mind when we're moving forward.
I think one of the main questions that has been posed to me from the community is what kind of timeframe are we looking at as far as bringing affordable or workforce housing to the City of Palm Coast?
Do you have any information on that?
Well, I'm not sure that there is a timeframe. I think the, the need is always immediate for affordable housing. And we know that with housing rises in mortgage, in housing costs, whether owner or, or for rental. I think what the committee is looking for is to really just, to begin, to start addressing and to recognize that there is a need for more affordable or workforce housing within this community. I think maybe expanding that there is a challenge here that's facing this community is the beginning of, of the process.
I think Councilperson Hyder has, has a correct question. Because I think she, like I, am aware that, so the money is sitting in Tallahassee today. There's money there. We don't know how to get it. So we don't know how to put together a program or a plan that people could start banging out a product that is affordable in six, 12, or 18 months. What we're asking is, how can you help us solidify or, or write up a program that we can ask, to make an actual ask? Because to sit around and ask, do we need affordable housing? I think, you know, we've beaten that horse to death. Yes, of course. If we want younger people or we have a whole variety of folks, police, fire, and, and medical staff as well that need housing that's affordable, we just need some help on how do we get it started so that within a definitive timeline, we end up with X number of dwelling units? That's the ask. Is that, is that fair enough, Councilperson?
I think that's fair. And also, I'm, the, the individuals that I've been meeting with, their concern is, we don't have another five years. We don't have 10 years. We need to find some type of remedy for this now and as soon as possible.
Any other comments? Thank you very much for your presentation.
Mayor, sorry, I just want to chime in here too. I understand the intent behind this program and I understand the need for workforce housing. And I don't want to cast a negative light on that. I just want to encourage our staff as we reopen the comp plan and as we're looking at our land development code, to understand that we are preempted in a lot of ways by what this does. So as we are determining how we're going to zone certain things and how we're going to move certain things around, we would need to be very mindful of smart managed growth while also providing the right percentage of workforce housing so that we are bringing in good-paying jobs, we're still focused on improving our commercial and industrial while also keeping in mind that this is a need in the community and I, and I understand that. But we are, this does preempt a lot of local rule here. So just be very mindful as we're kind of readdressing our entire plan here, what our decisions, what we think we have control of, what could be taken from us, from a local decision-making authority, if we don't zone things the right way and really look at this comprehensively. So I just want to make sure that we are being very mindful of this need, but that we're also balancing it with our need to engage in smart managed growth long-term. And I thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Have a great morning. Thank you.
We move on to our third presentation, which is the Franchise Fee Agreement with Florida Power and Light. So who is going to make that presentation? Oh, I see Helena coming forward.
Okay, sorry for that. Helena Allen, you're Financial Services Director. So at the June 13 workshop, council requested that we bring a presentation focused on possible implementation of an electric franchise fee. During the May 23 workshop, we presented to council major unrestricted revenue sources available to the city, being one of them the electric franchise fee. This is an agreement between the municipality and the electric provider, in this case, Florida Power and Light, essentially for the use of the city's right of way. It is calculated as a percentage of gross revenues and the maximum rate allowed is 6%. The usage or purpose can be determined by city council. And in our case, it would generate approximately 5.75 million annually. We will not review the public service tax today. Is revenue available to municipalities that levy a tax on the purchase of electricity, gas, and water service? The maximum rate is 10%. In the state of Florida, 35% of municipalities charge both a public service tax and an electric franchise fee. 53% charge one or the other. And then 12% do not have any tax or fee. As you can see from the chart, Palm Coast to the upper right-hand corner is unique when compared to surrounding municipalities. The state map shows the locations. Florida Power and Light has franchise agreements with 195 communities in Florida to include Benel, Flagler Beach, Ormond Beach, St. Augustine, and Daytona. To implement this fee, the city would enter. To implement this fee, the city would enter into a 30-year agreement with Florida Power and Light, granting the company the usage of the cities right away. The estimated revenue collections, as stated earlier, will be approximately 5.75 million at the 6% rate. This is unrestricted revenue and can support expenditures as determined by city council. Our next steps would be to work with legal to draft the ordinance and agreement with FP and Al and place on a business meeting for adoption. concludes my presentation. Do you have any questions?
I don't have a question. I'm just going to make a statement. This is nothing but a tax increase, and our citizens have been beaten up enough with the price of gasoline, the price of food, the price of everything. I just want to make it clear, I will not vote for either or any of this. It's a tax increase.
Did, Helena, did staff have a specific or an identified use for these additional funds? In other words, were they directed towards a particular project or to be used for a certain outcome?
So these are unrestricted funds. However, when we were here, Carl Cody presented the pavement management program, continues to be underfunded year after year. I believe he has an update coming to council also today, but that could be a possible usage of these funds as well as any other priorities, since it's unrestricted revenues.
Mayor, if I may, I appreciate you bringing forth this option. I think that we are, it is incumbent upon us to diversify our revenues. We know that 92% of our general fund monies come from ad valorem, and that is a very dangerous place to be. I think those of us who are people who have been here for 20 years know what that feels like when property values drop. So we could grant, we could do a rollback and then impose this type of franchise fee. And because they're unrestricted, we could diversify our revenues, still pay for pavement management, and also the increase in the public, the sheriff's contract with these monies as well. Is that correct?
So yes, you could make this general fund money, and you could dedicate a portion of it to pavement. The rollback rate, I believe, would set us back about 2.8 million, so let's say 3 million. So that would leave you the balance for the pavement program. Though, for future, this revenue probably would not grow at the same rate as your property values on a regular year, and we're not talking double-digit years, but you know, City of Palm Coast's property value is usually around 6%, 7%, right? And this wouldn't be a revenue that would grow at that rate. So long-term, it's not apples to apples.
So long-term, this would be less taxes out of our residents' pockets?
I would estimate so, yes.
Yes, okay.
Maybe, maybe, with electrical car charging at home, electrical car charging at home? Plot twist.
Haven't factored that in, but okay.
Well, but into your point though, Councilman Clufus, that was one of the things that you wanted as well, was, you know, recognition of this is a way that we could get revenues from those who use EV, and I think actually that was a point that Vice Mayor Danko made as well. So it seems to me that this franchise fee, while you can call it tax, you can call whatever you want, it diversifies, okay, it diversifies our revenues, but it's also a way to get money from EV charging, and it's a way that we can then grant the rollback we've all been talking about as a priority to grant and still generate income that is unrestricted. Is that accurate?
So are you saying, so if we replace ad valorem tax to this magnitude, we would have more flexibility with these dollars than we might have with the dollars we're bringing in traditionally?
Well, absolutely, and to Mr. Mansel's-
I'm thinking about it as a trade, Vice Mayor, as opposed to an increase. Because you buy flexibility with what you can spend the dollars on, and I'm sorry, just one other question, this may be an FPL question. That 6% is not arbitrary, but that's to be determined by the city of Palm Coast in the future?
I can answer that, Mayor. Yes, and FPL is here too to answer any questions, but the franchise agreement, the draft franchise agreement has it set at 6%. However, there's a clause in there that allows for, we specifically asked to provide information that allows for you to vary the rate in the future. I believe it can be done once per year, and it's between, you know, you can go down to a half a percent would be the least amount you could do, and the term of the agreement is for 30 years.
And what's the maximum?
6%.
Period. It can't go past 6%. Five years from now, won't be more than 6%.
No, it's at 6%.
At 6%.
And just to Mr., like, for an example, to Mr. Mansel's point, right? I mean, we're talking about juggling around five employees because we want to, we're taking money out of the enterprise fund, we're putting it into the general fund, vice versa. These are unrestricted funds. So this would eliminate kind of a lot of that juggling as well. So I just, I just encourage, I understand we want to be fiscally conservative, as do I, but when we're trying to just be more recession-proof, any diversification is a good thing. So I just encourage staff to, or rather, my colleagues to look at it very carefully and really, truly weigh the benefits and the costs of it.
And I agree, and Vice Mayor, just to understand where I'm coming from with this conversation today, I'm not just looking at the quantity of dollars, I'm also, at the same time, trying to look at the quality of the dollars, which means, quality meaning that wherever our need is, we can spend it on that, and maybe it requires a reduction someplace else, so that the overall effect on the resident is not, you know, an increase. It's just, I just want us to think it through. We're just on a workshop today.
It is an increase.
Not if you, not if you take it away from somewhere else.
So you robbed Peter to pay Paul?
Well, yeah, your pocket still has the same number of-
The last time we tried this-
Yeah, but are you hearing, are you hearing me? The dollars you can now spend where you need them, not where you had to spend them traditionally.
Remember the last time this was tried?
It's never been tried, it was a-
Yes, this was brought to council back in 2018.
It was discussed years ago.
Yes, and this place was packed with angry residents.
Okay, I can't, I can't speak to that.
And it failed, right, Nick? You were here.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't recall it being packed with angry residents.
I do.
Yeah, I don't know, if they're all wearing the same color shirt, it's probably because they're rezoning or something, but I'm with you that we, I don't think we actually brought this to a vote.
No, you stopped.
Yeah, but I mean, if it would have gotten to a point where everybody had showed up, it would have not gotten to a vote.
Here's, here's my point, okay? Government should be in place to provide infrastructure and public safety, and in my opinion, should largely stay out of everything else. So with these monies, we can fund the infrastructure that we absolutely need, which we're going to hear from Mr. Cody here momentarily, and we can pay for things like the $833,000 increase in our sheriff's contract, which we absolutely need because of our population increase. So if we, this gives us as council, who are elected officials, more control over how we spend our taxpayer dollars, because we can't continue to keep the 92% of the taxes from our general fund on their backs by simply owning a home. This is charging on usage. So I also think there's a fairness to it from that standpoint, and it allows us and our constituents to have more of a voice as to how their taxpayer dollars are being spent because it's unrestricted money. So I just, that's why I say, I think if we're going to grant, we should very well grant a rollback, it's a strategic priority for us, grant the rollback, and then start to diversify and institute this extra funding source so that our taxpayers can have more say into how their, these unrestricted dollars are spent.
How about making some cuts instead?
And I agree with you, and I've already proposed several of them.
And there's plenty of places to make cuts.
And Mayor, Vice Mayor Danko, I agree with you, and I've already suggested several cuts. I haven't heard any others. So I agree, it's a multifaceted approach. I'm just asking for more consideration instead of the obtuse view that this is a tax, and so I'm not going to vote for it.
I'm sorry, I'm not going to vote for it, and it is a tax increase, and we haven't talked about making any cuts yet.
I have, Vice Mayor.
Well, you've talked about it, but we haven't done it.
Because we're not to that point yet.
And there are serious places we can make cuts.
I agree with you, and I encourage us to have those discussions in the sunshine. I haven't heard any others.
So let's get to, let's get to the cuts first before we even consider something like this. Because people cannot limit their use of electricity, especially here in Florida in the summer. What, they got to turn their thermostats up to 85?
I do agree with you, but they also need a roof over their head.
Yeah, they need a roof over their head.
And they don't have-
And we're helping to take it away.
Our residents, our residents have no control over market values going up and down. They do have control to, yes, I put my thermostat at 77 degrees when I'm at home. So this is, all I'm saying is, we are actually, by doing this, we are giving more control to our taxpayers with regards to how these unrestricted funds can be used, and we're providing diversification and more recession-proof income to our city.
Sorry, but I respectfully disagree.
I respect your opinion.
All right, so let's, let's move forward, because until we get through all the presentations, we can't start to identify specific changes to the requested budget or cuts as you have described them. So I think we do have to get there, because then you can start to have a discussion about trading quality versus quantity dollars. So let's, let's finish through the presentation. Are there any more specific questions about this presentation? I think we've been given the information we need right now.
I would be remiss if I didn't also say that, you know, potential added usage would be electrical car, electrical car charging, but with the perpetuation of solar power, that would be a net decrease in this type of solution. Is that true? Because those aren't actually, right? Because those aren't actually dollars that would go back to the grid?
I don't know enough about that, to be honest with you.
Yeah, that's a good question, Councilman. Can, okay, go ahead.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Monica Barnes, Legal Counsel for FPL. Should I state my business address?
Go ahead, that's fine.
700 Universe Boulevard, Juneau Beach, Florida. To answer your question, the calculation comes from the base rate from the usage. So anything that's gone into the grid, that's going into the grid and then being used by the consumer, then the city will reap a benefit from that.
Understood. And then my, my follow-up question would also be the proportionality between residential versus commercial usage in the city of Palm Coast, the distribution of impact that the 6% would fall upon. Is there a way to kind of quantify that?
So in the base rate calculation, our customers are charged based on commercial, and there are different classifications of commercial customers, industrial customers, and residential customers. I don't have all of those calculations in front of me, but are you also asking if there's a way that we can probably impose a fee on one and not the other?
Well, not that there would be any specifics about imposing one on the other. Honestly, I would assume that the proportions of Palm Coast would be heavily towards like commercial usage. Like Walmart probably uses, you know, a ton of power compared to however many thousands of homes that would equate to. So I was just curious as to if this would be, you know, more contributed to by the commercial users and at what percentage that would actually be. But I'm not, I'm not asking for any specifics about, you know, taxing one person, not the other, just where it's coming from.
So yes, so their base, the base rate for commercial industrial customers is different, and that's determined by the Public Service Commission. So yes, obviously a Walmart, larger square footage, more warehouses, so they will use more, generate more power. So yes, that is correct.
And I just bring that to the point of this, Council. That could be an arguable point for, for or against, potentially on whichever position you're on, if we can say we're going to, you know, diversify $5 million of our revenue, and $4 million of that is going to be coming from, you know, commercial rooftops. That's just something that I think we should have in our arsenal, or potentially the other way. You know, I'm not saying it's one way or the other, but that's just the type of information that we may be able to use one way or the other.
Okay. I think that answers our questions for the moment. I think Councilman Clufus brings up a good point. I don't know if it's possible to show us a model, a representative city, on what percentage of this gain is actually paid by the commercial. We're underserved on the commercial basis, as you well know. So to, to the Vice Mayor's point, the burden falls on, you know, residential homeowners. I'd like to know if a comparable city, if that exists, can demonstrate that it doesn't have to be that way, that a lion's share of the burden could fall on the commercial enterprise. Think about it, and if you could pass any information back to us through city manager, I think that might be worthy of a look. Okay? Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
So I believe the split, when we calculated, was 78 to 22% commercial versus residential.
So one could even further the argument that if you were taking, relieving a tax burden off of our resident, that you could say that you're taking a dollar, you know, we're paying a dollar less, and you know, whomever, we're recovering at a different rate than the commercial. So I'm just saying, that could be an added piece of, you know, ammo to our arsenal that, you know, you may be, you know, you're robbing Peter to pay Paul, we say that, but generally we look at it as residential versus everybody else, right? So the distribution, right now, the burden's on the residents, if we can try to communicate that in a different manner, that, you know, may be successful.
I think it's going to come into play where you're not, homesteaded versus non-homesteaded will be paying the same rate for their usage, I believe, is where.
Okay. Councilperson Potier, did you have a comment?
No, thank you.
All right, so you'll, you'll, you'll pass that information as soon as you can, because I think we'd like to see that, because we're, we're, you know, we're trying, we're trying to digest the information before we formulate an answer. Mr. Cody is now going to give us a presentation on pavement management program, an update.
Yes, good morning, Council. Carl Cody, Director, Stonewater Engineering Department. I have here with me Craig Scherling. He is with TransMap. He is with the firm that did our pavement management analysis and put together a report for the city. He helped provide information, and he'll be presenting some of the slides here today. So this presentation is really to provide an update regarding the city's Palm Coast pavement, roadway asset management program. We'll cover the Palm Coast roadway network, resurfacing history, current issues, maintenance and rehabilitation strategies, the Pope County case study, looking forward, and then implementation plan and council actions. So the city of Palm Coast roadway network, you know, you've seen this slide before, it's a, you know, consists of 542 miles of roadway with a little over 1,126 lane miles. It values approximately $850 million as an asset. The roadway network is made of arterial and collector roads, which are primarily vehicle movers in the city, and local roads, which are the residential. Arterial and collector make up about 21.8%, and the local residential account for 78.2%. So our resurfacing history here in the city of Palm Coast, so from 2003 to 2012, the county had imposed a half-cent sales surtax. That revenue went to funding the milling and resurfacing program. During the 10 years that funding was in place, the city milled and resurfaced 650 lane miles of roadway. In the next 10 years since that funding source expired, the city has milled and resurfaced less than 200 lane miles of roadway. However, we were able to construct new roadways, to resurface additional roadways as part of roadway improvement projects with assistance of grant funding. And those streets are identified on the right-hand side there. So from 2002 to 2017, the only option utilized was milling and resurfacing. City staff inspected and identified roadways to be milled and resurfaced. In 2017, TransMap was hired and performed the data collection of our roadway system to establish the quality of the roadway network. They utilize scans that include a light detection radar, which uses a computer algorithm to evaluate the roadway condition and establishes a pavement condition index map of the city. This map gives a visual representation of the current quality of the roadways. This map and data behind it are used to identify individual roads and clusters of roadways that are most needed repair. TransMap performed the second roadway condition scan in 2021 to generate an updated pavement condition index map. Our current issues. So lack of funding. This chart shows the money spent for asphalt milling and resurfacing contracts and associated pavement management since the original roadway PCI scan by TransMap in 2017. Even with the recent budget enhancements by adding some general fund balance, it has not brought in enough revenue for the funding of the milling and resurfacing program, which has only averaged $1.81 million annually. So the orange line is the recommended funding, and then the dotted line is the average annual So a key component of the report that TransMap performed for us is generating a predictive model of the future PCI for the average roadway in the city. On the left is the graph of the PCI of the arterial roads, and on the right is the graph of the PCI of the local roads. This graph line shown in right is the future PCI rating of the Palm Coast roadway network if the city continues with its current funding for milling and resurfacing of 1.5 million per year. The average PCI drop we saw from the last four years was four points, a significant drop. The PCI drop we can expect for the next four years at the shown funding level is a nine-point drop, which is quite dramatic. at the shown funding level is a nine-point drop, which is quite dramatic. So TransMap modeled the recommended budget that maintains today's PCI level for the average roadway in Palm Coast based on bids from current milling and resurfacing contract. The bid scenario, the budget scenarios are modeled over the two categories, our arterial and local roads. On the left is the graph of PCI of the arterial roads, and on the right is a graph of the PCI of the local roads. The required budget of $12.2 million is not a budget to restore the roadway network to the PCI 79, but just to maintain today's PCI average rating of 75. An additional $10 million utilizing a new funding source is necessary as we are at a critical point in our roadway network. If we push this funding need down the road, the roadway deterioration accelerates, and a milling and resurfacing project becomes a full-depth repair project, and the cost per mile rises exponentially. And we will get, that's to a point where the city will not be able to fund the backlog if we don't start investing some additional dollars today.
Mr. Cody, may I just stop you for clarification? The numbers that we're looking at in this specific slide, are these figures to mill and pave?
This is strictly to mill and resurface.
Okay, thank you.
So this graph shows our summary of our arterial roadways. It shows the graph of when the roads were scanned in 2017. Our arterial roadways had an average of a 79. And when we scanned them in '21, they dropped down to a 73. So they actually had a six-point drop on the arterial network. We show the percentage in each category, whether it's good, satisfactory, fair, poor, and so forth, and then the associated lane miles with those roadways. So this is the residential roadway. In 2017, we had a PCI average of 74. It dropped to a 70 in '21. And you can see the breakdown on the right. So roughly half the roads are in a fair condition two years ago, roughly, coming up one two years ago. And the other half were above fair.
Can I ask one question, just for posterity? Just if you know this potentially, because the 2017 column don't have actual occurrences of the very pores or any of the conditions. Is it the fact that there are now nine in very poor and one in serious that brings down this integer to 70 from 74? Or is it more of the 86 to 100 range going down to the 71 to 85? Because it just, I'm just unsure of the prior distribution looking at this and where that four-point integer change came from.
Yeah, you, I mean.
I mean, honestly, it's the ones that 353 in the fair category that are dropping to the porous, because that's a big group. And all those roads are declining at the same rates. They're gonna drop.
Gotcha.
You're gonna see that more often than not.
Right, because usually the ones that are in good, the first few years that they're good, they're not dropping much at all.
And that would match the curve that we've seen a whole bunch of times.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
So we do have also increased complaints and maintenance. You know, as roadway condition declines, we have seen an increase in citizen complaints as well as maintenance efforts to repair roadways by city staff. Necesses, necessa, nah, requiring additional staff time and resources from other tasks. Maintenance rehabilitation strategy. So now, you know, we were tasked with looking at additional areas in terms of global treatments, rather than just milling and resurfacing, what's out there? What makes sense for us? You know, we have looked at this in the past and determined that, you know, over the life of the roadway, we found it to be, you know, awash. But there are some, you know, pros and cons to the system, and we'll cover all of those today. So we did a lot of data collection. You know, over the past several years, you know, our staff has assembled information. We put together a team from Stonewater Engineering in the Public Works Department to compile all the data that staff has collected or knowledge of various systems. We did follow, we had follow-up meetings and collaboration with other entities. We tasked our consultant, TransMap, to analyze and share their knowledge of treatments as well as any treatment recommendations that the city could incorporate in our pavement management program. So the bullets here talk about everything that we've done. You know, we've met with some of the contractors that actually do this work. We've reviewed the Pavement Preservation Council, Polk County Preservation Case Study that's out there, that was put on by that council. We met with Vanelle, Flagler Beach, and Polk County and had discussions with them about what they do, how it's worked, what the pros, cons were, you know, the good and the bad. We made site visits. We went and looked at some of the roadways that have been milled, looked at some of the older ones, some of the newer ones, you know, how they're holding up so we can get our eyes on there, talked to some local residents, got their take on it. And then we met with TransMap, you know, several times to go through our roadway network and have them run some scenarios with their software in terms of making some recommendations for our city. So some common global treatments used in Florida. The screen shows some of the more common ones in Florida as part of pavement management programs. The most typical treatments utilized are rejuvenation, micro-surfacing, and cave seals. TransMap's gonna provide an overview of these treatment types in upcoming slides as these were identified as a treatment type that are applicable for use in the city of Palm Coast Network. So you can see there are six here. The ones in green are the ones that are most common by agencies typically used. So rejuvenation. This is where I'm gonna have Craig take over and go through the different types of global treatments.
Well, these global treatments are kind of like PCI and timestamp too. So this first one, rejuvenation, it's basically once, once you have a road go down and you start seeing it turn from black to a grayish and start losing its oxidation and stuff like that, you're gonna put down this rejuvenator, they call it. Basically massages the asphalt and puts back in some nutrients to the asphalt, kind of gets rid of that oxidation that's occurring. Again, this is something that's timed. So when roads are like on a PCI valve of 90 to 100, why am I gonna touch a road that's that good? Let's let it go bad. Well, this basically kind of extends that life, right? So if I can get another two to three years of life out of that road, maybe four years of life out of the road before we start seeing cracks. And it's a very low, you know, $1.50 a square yard compared to what you're paying now for milling overlays. You know, what do you do now to make it? That's what these, all these global treatments are for. What are you gonna do to roads that are like in that range where we're not gonna do a milling overlay on them, but, you know, they got 353 in that area that are gonna drop, and all of a sudden, they're all gonna be there? Well, how do we treat some of those and not let them drop into that area where you gotta do milling overlays? And this is one. And like it says, typically provides three to five years of stabilization to the road before you start seeing that oxidation again. You can't keep doing it. This is like a one-shot deal. When you do this oxidation, you gotta hit it at the right time, this rejuvenator.
And one more, one question. The three to five years of added stabilization, does that actually, is the total lifespan of the road then an aggregate with the three to five years added? Are you adding three to five years onto the life of the road? Are you just kind of, is that decline of quality much more rapid after the three to five years?
No, you're kind of adding, you're holding it at that PCI level longer before it drops to the next one. That's what you're doing.
Thank you.
And we got a video here that we're gonna pull up that was provided to us from, from one of the manufacturers we've met with.
Oh, there are some awesome paving ASMR videos on YouTube. I didn't know if you were gonna bring one of those up.
Yeah.
So Chris, can you tell me about this rejuvenation that the county's now doing?
Absolutely. What, what we're doing here is preserving the asphalt pavement. And the purpose of that is the county spends a lot of money resurfacing the roads, and we want to keep those in good condition. So much like putting on sunscreen before you go to the beach, this is intended to go ahead and keep the roads in good condition, maintain that flexibility of the asphalt binder, and that will thereby extend the life of the pavement by about five years for each treatment.
Okay, great. So, and why would this be a good choice for the county to make in the pavement management program?
It's counterintuitive, but what we want to do is catch these roads while they're in good condition. So what the county has chosen to do is come in and pick the roads that were maybe paved in the last three to four years and go ahead and turn those roads into longer-lasting versions of what they would have been without the treatment.
Does this make for a good choice for the county to make?
As the county replaces roads that are at the end of their life, they're going to be spending as much as 60, 70% more. So if we can extend the life of those pavements by putting an application on the road like the asphalt rejuvenation, then we can lower the lifecycle cost of that pavement. And it keeps these roads in good condition to where the county doesn't have to bring contractors in to redo the roads in, you know, 15 years, let's say.
Yeah, it makes sense. Is there any environmental hazardous material in the process? Can you speak to that?
So this product has actually got a completely clean, we call it a clean, meaning zero, on the safety data sheet. So we always encourage people to look at that. There's no known environmental or health hazards that go with this product. Once it penetrates down into the road, it combines with the asphalt binder, and then it's completely safe. So we recommend people just not walk in the completely fresh material. There's a little bit of a slip hazard. You wouldn't want to, you know, just take and walk your dog right down the middle of the road. Probably not a good idea anyway. And so the good news is that, in a way, this is a green product in that if we can extend the life of this pavement, you'll have less greenhouse gas emissions because we're not having to come in and reconstruct this road as quickly. And so it is the, you know, really a very environmentally friendly way to approach it.
Okay, thank you, Chris.
And one other thing, you know, I think one of the things that people, you know, ask questions is, well, what kind of disruption is it gonna have on our neighborhood? The traffic really is able to be maintained throughout the course of the application. So we'll have single-lane closures, and the maintenance of traffic is always top of mind, as is safety. So one of the nice things about it is we're able to maintain pretty much regular use of the infrastructure by citizens while the process is ongoing. And so I think if, if people see us in the neighborhood, they're like, oh, man, here we go. But the fact of the matter is that it's very, very brief interruption, and within 30 minutes, the road, you know, looks wet. But it's, it's in essence fully penetrated.
So now we'll, we'll talk about micro-surfacing.
So again, what I'm gonna say too with these real quick is that, like, these treatments are not new, by the way. They have been used a lot in the past. They're not new treatments. This came out last year, the year before. Micro-surfacing's been used since the late 80s, even early 80s. It's, it's, this is more, has more aggregate in it. It's a difference between, it's not really a spray. It's kind of an application. It's got a little layer of aggregate in it, which is stone and traction and sand and stuff. This is something that, oh, I have cracks in my road already, but not big cracks, just certain-sized cracks that we went through and told you guys were, you know, PCI ranges of 70 to 90. But that's a 70 to a 90 that has certain styles of cracks. So then this would be a 5.50 a square yard cost. And this, again, so now this, this already went down on the PCI scale into the, you know, to the fair category of a 70 or, you know, maybe sits a 75. I don't know if I do anything with a 90 on this, but somewhere's in that 70, 75, 80. And say, okay, here's our candidate list. This will definitely, what it is, guys, is for, for your climate in Florida here, which we know today and everything, you're getting a lot of rain. Rain gets in the cracks, it goes in the subbase, it floats it, and you know, and you got issues with the subbase. That's what you don't want. This kind of application is gonna keep the rain out of the subbase. It's sealing the cracks, right? That's really what it's doing, is putting a little more aggregate because the cracks are bigger. So that's really what this micro-surfacing does. Cave seal is basically that same application, but that same application goes on top of a chip seal. A chip seal is something that has aggregate. It's almost exposed stones. You can drive on it, the stones won't come out, but it's not a, it's not a surface that people like to drive on or roll a skate on or skateboard on. So this is something that they put what they call a slurry seal on top, which is basically that micro, micro-surface on top. It's got a lot more thickness to it. So this is on roads that are definitely more towards your 65 and 70. Again, the 90 is probably too high for this. But it's gonna be on roads that are more of a 65, 70 that have, maybe this is an agricultural thing too. They love putting us on roads that are like, maybe not residential streets, but something like a collector or more of an arterial road that gets more traffic on it. This, this, this has a, typically, we reset things to 100 when you do a milling overlay. You wouldn't reset it to 100 for this, but this has a bigger aggregate base on it. It's a little cheaper than a milling overlay.
And we got a video here to show what these two systems are. This is a couple of both. They're showing you that the cave seal, so this would in the pipe, the micro-surfacing, so this is the pipe.
By the way, American Public Works Association is a big promoter of doing, you know, this kind of global treatments before roads get bad because of the cost, you know, and what's gonna happen. Again, these treatments have been around for a long time. I would also suggest doing these on something first before you go willy-nilly and do them everywhere. Just, you know, kind of a pilot area, test area. Get a company in here to do, you know, a few, five, 10 miles of it just to see what it's like, what it looks like when it dries. Again, it's all gonna be up to your residents and you guys, how things look when they're done.
So this kind of touches upon, you know, the, you know, kind of touches upon what Craig mentioned, you know, the right road, the right treatment at the right time. So, you know, the rejuvenator, you know, it's called fog seal. And this one, there's various types of treatments, you know, is up where they're in the high, high-level newer roads. The chip seal, micro-seal, you want to get it down in that, you know, 75 or above, plus or minus range. And then there's various treatments as you go down. But those are the three that are most typically used here in Florida.
They would work in conjunction with your milling overlays. So that's, you know, your milling overlays would be the ones that are already lost cause, right? There are too many cracks, too much to deal with the stuff. So they're already in your 30s, 40s, and 50s. You're not gonna stop doing that. This is in addition to that.
And we may have some that are 75 that aren't capable to have global treatment because of the type of cracking or whatnot. So the software helps identify those types of distresses where it's not gonna be the right treatment. It's gonna fail too quickly. You're not gonna get that five to seven or 10 to 12 years or whatever's recommended. So the software helps us identify specific roadways in that range because not all of them in the range you can put global on. And so what we learned, you know, from TransMap, from local entities, from what we observed, from the case studies, you know, all the data that we collected, you know, over the past several years is, is that, you know, the key positive global treatments is that they have a lower upfront cost. They allow ability to maintain more lane miles, maintain the existing roadways at a higher level of service, and it adds a sacrificial layer to the roadway pavement. You know, some of the negatives of global treatments is they are not recommended for arterial or high-volume residential roadways. The questionable use on cul-de-sacs because with trucks doing lots of turning movements with their big wheels, some, a lot of times, are loosening up that micro-surfacing and it's popping off. So cul-de-sacs have seemed to be an issue from what we've heard from the other agencies on those areas. And over the long-term life of the roadway, there's no cost savings. There's some upfront cost savings, but the long-term, it's awash. With the exception of rejuvenation, Polk County indicates that they've seen some cost beneficial to implementing rejuvenation into their program. I think they, we'll, we'll go over that when we get to their case study. But the global treatments also add no strength to the roadway, and it never sets the roadway to 100. So, you know, you're not getting... So, you know, you're not getting, you know, a milling resurface is like a brand new road. You know, this is going to, it may look like a brand new road, but it's not a brand new road. Those cracks are going to telegraph back through in a couple of years. You know, the, the roadway is, you know, going to start looking poorer fairly quickly over time. Yeah, it's going to look black at first and it's going to look nice, but it, it's not going to last very long, you know? So that, that's just something to, to keep in mind, but it does add some life to the roadway and buys us some time. And, you know, there's, there's additional staff time, you know, with global treatments because now instead of doing 100 roads, you know, 100 miles of roads, you may do in 300. So you got more residents to deal with, you got more, you know, it's just more time for bidding. You're going out to bid more often because if you're rejuvenating every two years and in micro-surfacing every five to seven. So we, we just have more, more to manage with staff using global treatments. It'll increase some staff time commitment to this type of project and making sure that it's the right treatment on the right road. So we'd have to work in conjunction, you know, with various contractors. We learned a lot from the Polk County case study. There, there are a very large network that's out there. The Florida Local Assistant Program, LTAP, who's guided by Federal Highway Administration, partnered with the Florida Pavement Preservation Council and created a webinar on Polk County and made a preservation case study. It covers the development implementation of a comprehensive pavement management program using Polk County as a state case study. They included topics for general approaches to pavement management, the introduction to Polk County, the evolution of their pavement management system, updated analysis results, an overview of the county's preservation contract, analysis effect on inflation and pricing over the years. The following information came from webinar that was made at the 2022 Florida Associated County Engineers and Road Superintendents as well as corresponding, correspondence and meeting with Polk County staff. So their, their roadway network is 2,535 centerline miles, you know, as opposed to ours, which was a little over 500. So, you know, they're about five times as many roads as us. You can see their breakdown of local residential, they have a lot of rural roads, so little different scenario than what we have here in town. They got some urban collectors, which could be our tier of roadways. They broke down specific arterials, which, which I'm not sure which roadway that would be, but it, it could be a, a more intense roadway in some local commercial. Polk County falls within the I-4 corridor between Tampa and Orlando. It's the fourth largest county by area in the state. The road classification shows that 50% of the roadways are local residential. Since 2017, they created a standardized rating method in PCI data as modifying the resurfacing approach to include the addition of wider range of resurfacing treatments to what they were doing, which created a better ability to select the right treatment for the right segment at the right time. This program, coupled with an increase in annual resurfacing budget, vastly increased the average number of miles they treated per year. You can see this is the various treatment types with the miles treated since 2018, I mean, 2018 to present. Rejuvenation is, is way up there. They do like that. Of their 18, and then micro-surfacing is, is another one, and then milling and paving and overlay is their large big chunks. So those are the three. They do some cape sealing, but it's very limited. They use, they intend those more in their agricultural type roadways where it seems to be their prime area or best location to use that method. And something to make note of, of their $18 million budget, they spend two thirds of that on milling and resurfacing. And their two main treatments, you know, are rejuvenation and micro-surfacing. So the Polk County program has dedicated millage that funds $15 million of their $18 million budget. They face similar challenges as the city of Palm Coast with the need for additional funding. You can see in their graphs, you know, their PCI drop. And they identified a need for an annual budget of $35 million to maintain their roadway average of a 70. You can see their, their budget slowly creeped up over the years trying to get to 35 million. So the Polk County program summary, Polk County utilizes mainly rejuvenation and micro-surfacing. Rejuvenation is only used on roads with speeds lower than 45 miles an hour, lower traffic volumes. Rejuvenation is applied in year one or two and again on year six after new construction and resurfacing. They have been using this since 2006 and are seeing that it does add some life extension to the roadway. They typically utilize a double micro-surface applied on low speed traffic volume roadways less than 45 miles an hour and are typically getting between six to eight years of life out of that double micro-surfacing on those low speed residential roads. They applied micro-surfacing to a few higher speed roadways to test the durability, but don't have conclusive data yet. They did find that it was hard to get the required reflectivity out of the striping that was put on the micro-surfacing. They're also testing it in some rural areas to see how it holds up. So we took all that information and then kind of look at, all right, how can we incorporate that or implement that into our city of Palm Coast pavement management program? And we, knowing that we would have to phase something in, we're proposing a phased implementation, you know, for what was recommended in the, the last TransMap report. So the intent was to provide a plan that incorporates the use of global treatments and reduces the current $10 million annual need of additional funding. The recommendation for arterial and collective roadways is to utilize milling and resurfacing only due to the speed of the roadways and, and the cost implications, you know? Because one thing, when you're dealing with those higher roads is you have reflective pavement markers, you have striping, you get traffic loops. So if you're going in there to do something that's only going to last, you know, five to seven years or even 10 to 12 years, you're paying a lot of those overhead costs or supplemental accessory costs into doing that type of treatment. And 45 miles an hour, they, they recommend even not putting in anything 45 or above. It's, you know, below 45. So our intent was to stick with milling and resurfacing only and to maintain a 73 PCI over the upcoming five-year outlook. The local residential roads though, the plan would introduce global treatments and have a funding level necessary to provide a maximum four-year point drop in the PCI average for the upcoming five-year outlook was our original guidance that we're looking at. Additional future funding will be required to eliminate any continued drop in local residential roads. So that's where additional future funding would be needed to complete, to stop the, the drop, the curve drop on those residential roads. So our existing funding sources now are, we've gone over these in, in the past, so I'll go over them quickly, is our local option fuel tax and the state revenue sharing. The recent revenue allocated to the Streets Improvement Fund averages roughly $3.1 million a year for the next upcoming five years. Those dollars are eligible for roadway maintenance, a large proportion of which is assigned to the asphalt resurfacing program. The city has deferred certain items and increased the fund allocation to assist in adding funding to the payment program. However, it is not nearly the funding needed. It is also not sustainable as traffic signals and other roadway maintenance are going to increase over time as those items get older, which will require additional funding, which will reduce some of the funding allocated to the payment program. So we, we had TransMap run a model with their pavement management software and identified a need of $2.4 million annually over the next five years to maintain a PCI of 73 for the city's arterial and collective roadway network. You will note that there are no roadways that meet the criteria for global treatments and these dollars are in today's dollars with the anticipation that the increase in revenue would equal the cost of inflation. So then we had them run the residential roadway network just with milling and resurfacing and identified a need of $4.2 million over the next five years to maintain a maximum drop. You can see it's a drop of two from the average of 70 that's, that it is today utilizing milling and resurfacing only. These dollars are in today's dollars with the anticipation that the increase in revenue would equal the cost of inflation. The addition of, in addition, over the five-year plan, staff will update PCI maps and identify future funding needed so that the average PCI would bring the average PCI back to a 70 beyond those five years. So our goal is to, you know, our intent was to maintain a 70, but we know we, we need to drop below that with a phased in approach, but we don't want to get too low that we can't get back to that 70 is, is where this 4.2 million came from. We just wanted to get as, stay as minimum below the 70 as possible. So this one here, we had TransMap run a model, identified a need, you know, still that $4.2 million over the next five years to maintain a maximum drop of two points below the average of a 70. You'll note that the software identified using global treatments, which is shown in the green on the graph, these dollars are in today's dollars. And the same goes for, you know, future additional need. And you can see the breakdown. Now, if we go back to the previous slide, we're doing roughly in a five-year timeframe, 175 miles, lane miles. And in this one with global treatments, we're doing 400 and roughly 69 miles, 321 with global treatments, primarily micro-surfacing, there'll be some rejuvenation in there as well, and then 147 or so milling and resurfacing miles. So, you know, then we, we looked at, well, you know, we know leveraging contracts, putting them up to the bids, getting vendors in here, you know, bigger quantities, you get sometimes better rates on some of those costs. So we're saying, well, maybe we could look at lumping more of the global upfront. So one, we could possibly get better funding or better pricing. And then two, it would give us those five years to analyze how those treatments are holding up across the network. So when we re-scan the road in five years, we can ascertain, okay, were our assumptions correct in us treating the proper roads? Do we need to look at where we implement these global treatments differently and strategize, you know, our future pavement management program down the road? So that's when we came up with this, this third graph, and this is where we, we put lots of global treatment in the first year and skip milling and resurfacing. We're like, well, if they got a milling resurface, they can wait another year. Let's put those out. And again, this is annual average. So, you know, we may do arterials one year, residential roads the next year. You know, we'll strategize on what makes sense, but with this one, we're touching 690 lane miles, 567 in global, 123 conventional, but this would get a lot of micro-surfacing down the future years. A lot of those would probably be rejuvenation. So as we're milling and resurfacing new roads, we're, we're adding that rejuvenation onto them. So, you know, this, this seemed to be a, a good way to do that, that case study, that pilot study, get a lot of global treatment down in various types of roadways in the city, take a look at what, you know, over time, how they're holding up and working for us in our city with our infill lots and, and cul-de-sacs and, and just our roadway network system, you know, what works for us. So with that plan, you know, the payment program budget, you know, the required funding is $6.6 million, you know, which requires an additional funding of $4.5 million, assuming we're still going to defer all those other streets improvement items and knowing that, you know, that we have concerns about other roadway maintenance needs as well. So 4.5 million is a minimum that's going to be needed, you know, over, over the next five-year cycle here. So council actions would, one to be, to concur that our approach to the payment management program is to fund arterial and collective roadways to maintain an average of 73 PCI with milling and resurfacing. And then to identify our approach to residential roads if we want to mill and resurface only, mill and resurface with the global treatments identified by the software or milling and resurface with the approach of upfronting the global treatments mostly primarily in that first year and then doing our analysis on doing that test case on those streets. And then council actions for, that's the council direction. Then council actions would obviously be to adopt an additional funding source for the initial needs, for the initial phase and approach for the city's payment management program. And then future actions would be approve additional funding in the future so we could fully fund that pavement management program after that fifth year. So today we'd be looking for, you know, some direction on our approach to the roadway payment management program. And then any questions on council's actions with additional funding for the program?
So Carl, at the end though, you're saying it's not going to save us any money. Is that correct?
Well, over the long-term life, we're talking 80 years or so, you know? So once you, you micro-service it a couple of times, you'll resurface it, you micro-service it a couple of times, you, you mill and resurface. Once you look at like an 80-year plan on that roadway, you're spending the same amount of money, but initially you're getting a lot more roads covered, upping that PCI average across the road. Because, you know, because part of the downturn of paving so many roads in 10 years was milling and resurfacing lasts 20 years in residential roads. So we're getting a lot of those roads failing at the same time. So ideally, we would have had a 20-year plan so we could have paved residential roads over a 20-year timeframe. So these global treatments will help add some time on, spread out those residential roads over that 20-year span. So some will be 10, some will end up getting to that 20-year timeframe. So it will help average things out for us in the long-term.
And you're saying that cul-de-sacs are probably out of the question?
We, we may try a couple. We, we've, we've just-
I, I mean, I'm curious, other people have tried it already. I would think there's got to be some data there that just says, don't do cul-de-sacs or do it.
Yeah. It, it all depends how many trucks go back and forth on it. Do they run around the circle or do they back up and forth? It depends on the driver of the, of the, those cul-de-sacs. It's not recommended.
Our fire trucks are probably going to do a little backing up, I would guess.
Right. If you're building-
Really, really great, and I know they're pretty good.
Right.
But our garbage trucks will probably go around in the circle.
Right. That's where we seem failing. So they would either need some maintenance by our staff to, to go in and address them if something did happen to those, or we would spend that extra dollars to milling and resurface. So, you know, it's, it's going to be one of those balances of how often do you need to maintain it versus the added cost to milling and resurface? So we, we may on a more fully developed, there's, there's no vacant lots in the cul-de-sac and it's a shorter cul-de-sac, you know, we may just micro-service it, but if it's got vacant lots, we know there's going to be big trucks with trusses or some, you know, concrete block or whatever it may be, we may mill and resurface. So we'll look at the condition of the roadway too. You know, if it's in better condition, it may be more adept at having a global treatment put on it, but if it's got a lot more cracks, that's not going to help either. So I, you know, it's, it's not, it's not a blanket thing you can throw out there. You know, the software will spit something up, but we're going to have to go out as staff and assess-
So we're going to have to spend staff hours basically looking at every street, every cul-de-sac to make this effective?
Probably. The software will help identify, at least it does that, it'll help identify the roads and some of them may be, well, half the roads should be globe, you know, should be a micro-surf and half should be, you know, milling and resurface because it's got all these bad cracks and it's not meant. So we'll go and look at it and we'll say, we're not going to have two contractors on the same road with two different types of treatments. So we're going to look at the lengths, we're going to go site visit the, you know, has it changed over the two years? Let's just mill and resurface the whole roadway. We'll make the call in the field, you know? We'll have some of those, but some we can pull straight from the, the study and say, I said global, we'll do a drive-by. Yeah, it's clearly global, everything matches up and we're going to go with it. So there'll be some staff time, but it's not going to be, you know, astronomical, I guess.
Have, have you visited other communities that have been doing this to see?
Yeah, we went to Benell, we went to Flagler Beach. We, we've been to Orman in the past and actually watched it go down and, and talked to them. You know, some of the, the Benell residents said, well, it's better than nothing, you know?
That's a big endorsement. I mean, seriously. Better than nothing?
Right.
Which is what we have now on most of our streets.
Right. You have a big, you have, you know, you have roadways that are cracking and spalling on the edge. So you have that or you get micro-surfacing that, you know, adds a fresh coat on there, buys you several years and it's, it's better than what you had. It's not going to be brand new, but it's going to be better than what you had.
Carl, Benell continues with their program? They, they've, they've endorsed the program, correct? And they're continuing with it going forward?
Yeah, Benell and Flagler Beach are continuing with the program. I think Orman Beach, we haven't got conclusive data. They had a lot of staff changes, so we're not exactly, we think they've scaled it back somewhat from they did, just based on some of their resident feedback down there, but...
And Benell's been using it for how long now?
I want to say we looked at some roads that are at least five years old.
Five years, okay.
But I know they just recently had some done, or Flagler Beach just recently had some done.
And I guess, is there an easy way for you to come back to us and tell us if we, if we agreed that this is a, a good directional approach? If we did half of it in the upcoming fiscal budget year and delayed the other half for the second because of the priority pointed out by the software? Can you let us know if there would be a catastrophic- Can you let us know if there would be a catastrophic result if we pushed half of it a year? And I'm talking about obviously waiting on the, the, the data that shows the lesser corrupted roads.
I'm, I'm not sure if I fully understand the question.
So whatever your ask is, if cut it in half, you can do half of it this year and half of it next year. What's the, what's the downside on the roads?
Mayor, are you referring to this slide right here?
Yeah.
This slide, all that global, only do half of it in year one, and then-
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just, I'm breaking into two years instead of one year.
Right, just break this, so basically the, instead of, you know, the 123 in conventional, 566 miles in global, you're pretty much doing half. So, you know, instead of dumping off 4.2 into global the first year, two, you know, do 2 million the first year, 2 million the second year. I think that's what he's asking.
But you still spend 4.2 over the, you do milling and resurfacing that second year too.
Yes, but I'm, I'm kicking the can just a little bit here in favor of this year's budget. So, okay, so that's doable.
Yeah, yeah, anything's doable. We could come up with 100 different scenarios if we wanted to.
We're not, okay, when, everything's doable, of course, it's better than nothing. I'm not going to be creating unsafe roads because I added a year to the program.
No, no.
That's my question. Okay, thank you.
Payment's not that quick.
Right, okay, right. Questions?
No, 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 I'm good, I'm good.
So my question is, on the slide that has the required funding, 6.6 million, is that over this period through fiscal year 2028?
That, that's, that's the average funding per year?
6.6 is the average funding per year?
Correct.
Okay, so-
And that would go up as revenue increases or collected, so that's in today's dollars, so.
So then, if you could explain to me, excuse me, if we go back to the slide that we were just looking at, for fiscal year, yeah, for fiscal year 24, you're saying 4.2 annual budget with first year global only, where's the other 2 million?
That's in arterial.
Okay, so you would still, you're still wanting to put 4 million in with the global treatments plus 2 million of milling and resurfacing?
Yes.
Got it.
And we probably, we, we may skip arterial and do 4 million in arterial one year, you know, because it's going to be more cost-effective, we may get better bids, so that may, may make more sense. Some of our roadway, arterials are real long, multiple, you know, four-lane roadways are very costly, you don't get a lot done, that, that money goes fairly quick. So, yeah, we may not spend exactly 2.2 every year, all depends on the roads and the network that we're doing.
So it seems to me, I mean, when we looked at your presentation, what, two months ago, maybe a month and a half ago, time is kind of of the essence for a lot of roads. So in your opinion, is this engaging the global treatments, even though yes, over an 80-year period, it's going to be a wash, will this help our roads more in a global perspective, widespread, to have cleaner, less potholes, things of that nature over the next 20-year period?
Yeah, this should help reduce some maintenance. It, it should, it will drive up the PCI in some of those roads, and some of the roads that are in that fair condition is going to bump them up to the good, so, you know, won't bump them all the way up to the top, but it'll bump them up so that they're better over a larger network. So more residents are going to see a better value or, or an increased condition of the roadway. It won't be a brand-new roadway, but it's going to be a better condition.
And what is the, have you all done a cost analysis to see going this route? What's the percentage less that we would spend via this plan versus the plan that you proposed a month and a half ago over that 20-year period?
Over a 20-year period? That, that's difficult to forecast because not knowing the exact drop of the roadways and which milling and resurfacing roadways that we do.
So then, correct me if I'm wrong, i- is this more of a, we, we've got these dollars set aside that we want to spend, but using this, this method versus milling and resurfacing, we can cover a lot more mileage?
Right, we cover a lot more miles, and over the 20 years, yes, you will, will, I guess, over the 20 years, you'll spend the same amount of money, but you're going to touch more roads and you may actually not, you'll, you may keep the curve from going down as, as fast.
So we'll have less catastrophic failures?
Yes, that's, that's the hope, that a lot of the roads don't fall into that quick drop that we get to them before then.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Questions?
No questions.
No, I don't have any, but I think overall, it seems like we might be able to keep that curve higher for an extended period of time, which I think is, I don't think anyone up here can argue that, keeping the roads in a higher quality on average over a 20-year curve is more ideal, so I appreciate the in-depth. Honestly, I didn't know about all the different solutions for our roads here, so this was very informative, and I thank you for the presentation.
Yes, Carl, thank you for your work on this, I appreciate it.
And I guess, I guess, I, nobody asked this question, unfortunately, I probably know the answer. Is there any kind of grant funding from DOT or from the state that would help us with these programs, or are we currently working to get some of that funding?
There's, there's very minimal funding. What, we, we typically try and resurface roadways as part of a road project, like the, the funding we just got for Volking's Roadface 2, we're going to go to mill and resurface our existing two lanes, build two new lanes, so that's going to help us. So the, if they're part of a transportation project, we can resurface the roadway. Now strictly resurfacing only, we as a city don't have roadways that follow, that would qualify, the county has some because they're a small county and they can do some roadway conversions from dirt to asphalt and a few other things, but nothing that we qualify for as a city.
And the fact that we have very few north-south evacuation routes or corridors, is there a play there to get some money out of the state? Because we're, we're making them safer longer so that in the event we need to use them for evacuation routes, they'll be in, you know, good, better shape?
Yeah, we, we, we haven't found any funding that we can apply for. We do continue to, to seek dollars, but nothing has been-
Is that something we could put on the list, city manager, with our lobbyists, just to ask, to make sure that we're not overlooking something? I, I'm doubtful, but we're in a unique situation, as Carl rightfully says, the, the labeling on our roads, I mean, we just have our roads, they're kind of local roads, we don't have that, that advantage of having, you know, county and state roads like our surrounding neighbors have. Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions? Next item is a resolution, so councillor, if you would read that in for us, please?
Of course, this is a resolution concerning the interlocal agreement between the City of Palm Coast and Flagler County School District for the joint use of real property and facilities and coordination of programs and services. A resolution of the City of Palm Coast, excuse me, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida approving the terms and conditions of the interlocal agreement with the Flagler County School District for joint use of real property and facilities and coordination of programs and services, authorizing the mayor or designate to execute said agreement, providing for severability, providing for conflict, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
Okay, well, good morning, Mayor, oh, good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. James Hurst, Parks and Rec Director, and with me today from the school district, I have Joshua Walker. He is the Coordinator of Community Services and Interlocal Agreement, so if you have any questions for him, he's here to answer any of those. So today, before today is the master agreement for joint use of programs and services between the City of Palm Coast and the Flagler, Flagler County School District. We've been in this agreement for quite a bit, and then, for quite a while, and then we're kind of few, looking into the future, we, we will have some extra sub-agreements to go along with this master agreement as well. Those sub-agreements will include Indian Trail Sport Complex and the Beltair Park and Buddy Taylor PE Fields behind that school there. So I'm just got a couple of slides, so nothing too crazy today, but, so this, this graph here shows you just kind of what we use within the school district and what the school district used, used for our facility. So on the left, we utilize the fields three through eight, the sport complex. For our adult programming, we use the school gym. For continued adult pro, program, we use the Rimfire Elementary Gym and Parking Lot, and that also helps us with Ralph Carter Parking. And then something new that's coming along, we're looking to explore the Buddy Taylor Middle School PE Fields, so it's behind Buddy Taylor next to the pool. And then we also use the Buddy Taylor Middle School Gym for summer camps, but also some adult programming as well. And then what the school uses for, on our side, is the Palm Coast Aquatic Center, so we have the Matanzas High School Swim Team utilize the pool during their swim season. We have both high schools use the tennis center for their High School Cup, which is a cool little event. We also have both high schools use the golf course for practice. And then obviously Beltair Park is something new that we are working with the school, and then for Palm, the Palm Coast Community Center, that's our before and aft, it's after-school programming. And then just quickly, next step, so we'll look to, for the approval of the, this master ILA agreement. Today, we have a meeting with the school board at 3 o'clock, which I will be attending, and then we will be bringing some more sub-agreements for Indian Trails and Beltair and Buddy Taylor. And that is it, without any questions?
Mayor, if I, if I may just supplement, so the City of Palm Coast and the school district has had multiple agreements over the year, a ton, spanning over years. A few years ago, it's probably three years ago now, we started working with the school district to try to consolidate all these various agreements we had, and so the idea was to make a master facilities agreement, include all the facilities that we use, and have this serve as a base agreement that can act in all these instances. But if there's specific things that go towards that facility, like the Indian Trails Fields, there's a maintenance obligation there, that's a shared maintenance, and there's some monies that passed hands for this maintenance, that would be in a sub-agreement specifically for that complex. But in general, this ILA, master ILA is supposed to cover all these other agreements we had outstanding, and it repeals and replaces those outstanding agreements, so this document will now be controlling.
So Lord of the Ring rules, it'd be one document to rule them all? Okay, perfect, good.
I just have a couple of questions for, and this is probably more for you, Nasa, for this master agreement, and I guess for our insurance policies, are we naming each other as additional insured?
So we are not permitted under our insurance policies to name others as additional insured, it's a restriction that we have on our public policy, so we won't be requiring that, and I don't think the school district will require that either, because typically, public bodies, their insurance companies don't allow us to name others. We always ask private parties to name us as additional insured, that's part of our standard insurance requirement.
So either way, regardless of who's on this field, I just want to make sure that we don't end up getting wrapped up, obviously, in a legal matter because somebody gets hurt as a part of these agreements, as long as we're covered in some way.
Yeah, so we, I think what the agreement says, every, there's an assumption of risk portion, where we assume risk for our activities and they assume risk down there, it's kind of split down the middle, which with each party, you know, agreeing to be responsible for any type of right claim comes forward that's attributable to them. We also have the standard sovereign immunity section, and no one's waiving any, the, the tort cap limit that's in 728.
And is there, does it make any sense to just add a clause in this that says there's no third-party beneficiary?
I-
I didn't see it in there.
If there's not one in here now, we, yeah, we can add that.
Yeah, if we can add that.
Sure.
Anyone else? Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you for, I've participated in a lot of the adult education programs that use school facilities, and it's a great relationship, and we're really exceptionally privileged to have great facilities, not only within the city, but also within the school district, and I thank you for the synergy.
Other person, any comment? No? Anyone else? We thank you, good luck with, with the agreement, and that'll be coming back to us for review, right?
Yep.
May I just ask, does that, I'm familiar with the concurrency interlocal agreement, does this agreement involve anyone else besides the, the City of Palm Coast, or is it just between the district and the city?
Just between the district and the city.
Nobody else, right? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have a resolution approving a contract for management of the Ralph Carter Park cell tower with Diamond Communications. If you could read that in for me, please, I appreciate it.
Sure, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida approving the terms and conditions of the contract with Diamond Towers for LLC for management of the wireless communications facility located at Ralph Carter Park, authorizing the city manager or designate to negotiate, finalize, and execute said agreement, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date.
Doug, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, Doug Akins, IT Director. Actually, we're presenting the next two items, number six and number seven for you. You may remember back in January, I brought a amendment that was needed in order to upgrade T-Mobile's equipment on the Ralph Carter Park Tower. The T-Mobile customers in the area may have received improved service because of that, because of the new equipment, but this is actually adding new carriers to both of these towers, so we're actually expanding coverage, this is a very good thing, I believe. For both of these projects, in order to do so, we are not increasing the size of the compound or the size of the tower at all, we're just adding new equipment to these towers, so we don't have to construct new towers, so both of these, I think, are very good initiatives. The first one, of course, is the Ralph Carter Park Tower. This is the tower that's located at the backside of Ralph Carter Park. This tower was constructed in 2008, this is a city-owned cell tower. T-Mobile is currently the only tower, carrier on the tower, and as I just mentioned, they recently upgraded their equipment there. Verizon has reached out to Diamond Communications and expressed interest in co-locating on the tower, so we would like to create a site management agreement with Diamond Communications to manage this tower for us. This would allow them the ability to market the tower to additional carriers, so we still have AT&amp;T and Dish Networks who might be interested in coming on. So this site agreement would allow them to market to the additional carriers, but also would allow them to bring Verizon on as a carrier. Under this agreement, it's very similar to what we had within the past when they were doing the wireless master plan, we would continue to receive 100% of the revenues of the T-Mobile carrier that was existing, and we would receive 65% of the revenues from any new carriers they would bring on. So any questions on this, and before I move on to the-
Give us an idea, what does 65% represent?
I believe that's roughly around 14, 15,000 a year.
And is that showing up in next year's budget yet?
It's not reflected because we haven't had the agreement finalized.
Right, okay, but it's something you would consider putting in if, if City Council were amenable?
Yes, sir.
Where do those revenues go?
They go into the IT enterprise budget, that's the cell towers and fiber, and I believe that's coming to you at the end of this month.
Okay, thank you.
No other questions?
None.
Okay. The next one is, actually, I'm sorry.
If I could just, if I could just make one, so, just so you all know, there are a couple items in this contract that we are still finalizing with the, with Diamond, so your authorization includes the ability for the city manager to finish final negotiations and execute the agreement. So I just want to make that known, that what you're seeing in here is going to be, obviously, we're, it's going to go to your next agenda, so it'll be a little different when it gets to that, it'll be final.
And Doug, this is sort of a higher-level question. So why has it been so long for these towers to become more productive? In other words, you're, you're wanting to add more vendors to them, I certainly understand that. I've been told that the coverage in our area is as low as 14% in some areas, so what is the, what's been the roadblock, if I may ask?
Yeah, we definitely need improved coverage throughout the entire city, as far as the roadblock. I think it just depends on the carriers and their budgets, and when they decide to invest in the area. My understanding is their budget cycles are very, very long.
Okay, and I guess what I'm really getting to, can we better or more aggressively promote what we've already got standing to improve our coverage? Because quite frankly, a 14% coverage is, is worse than, you know, some third-world countries I know out there, and it just is, is unacceptable.
Yes, sir, we're actively working on the second iteration of our wireless master plan.
Okay.
As you know, planning is going through and identifying parcels, but as part of that, we're working on what the next agreement looks like, and we'll bring that to you hopefully fairly soon.
Good, thank you.
Yes, sir. So the second side is again Beltair Park. This tower is an existing tower located next to the Palm Coast Aquatic Center and Beltair Park. This was a site lease the city entered into with T-Mobile back in 2006. T-Mobile and Verizon are currently on the tower, this is not a city-owned tower, T-Mobile owns this tower, and Crown Council manages it for them. AT&amp;T has been looking to go into this area for quite some time, so they've explored the option of building a new- AT&amp;T has been looking to go into this area for quite some time, so they've explored the option of building a new tower there. So having them co-locate on an existing tower, I think, is a much better option, and looking forward to having this pass. So this amendment will allow T-Mobile to sub-lease the ground they currently lease to T-Mobile, to AT&amp;T. And as part of this agreement, the city will receive forty percent of the revenues from AT&amp;T for that agreement.
I'm just going to have council read this ordinance in, because, a resolution, I'm sorry.
Sure, this is a resolution, which is an amendment to communications site lease agreement with T-Mobile, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, approving, amending the communications site lease agreement with T-Mobile to allow for sub-leasing with AT&amp;T, authorizing the city manager or designate to negotiate, finalize, and execute said agreement, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, providing for implementing actions, and providing for an effective date. And I'll just add to what Doug said. So this was an interesting agreement, because it, it was not standard as far as tower agreements go, because it required you to, a vendor coming in to lease space on the tower and space on the ground separately, with two different entities. So what we're doing in this is we're consolidating that into one entity, where they enter into one lease, and they don't have to have a ground lease with the city, and then a lease for space on the tower, too. We can just allow for them to lease out the ground space and the tower space at the same time, and not have to have two different leases and pay out two different ways. So that's what this is updating and doing.
So that's the differential on the percentage from the prior?
Yeah, the, in, in the prior, there wouldn't have been a percentage, because we would have set the rate for just the ground, and they would have set the rate for just on the tower.
So what was the sixty percent in the prior slide?
In the prior slide, that was Diamond's agreement.
That was for the other agreement.
For managing Ralph Carter Park Tower.
Yeah. This is.
So, so help me with the, what's the difference between sixty and forty? I know it's twenty, but.
Okay, so on the, the previous, that was for Ralph Carter Park, a different tower. That doesn't have this same strange agreement with T-Mobile. This is for the Beltair.
So on the, on the Ralph Carter Park Tower, we own the land and the tower. Where the second agreement, we own the land, T-Mobile owns the tower.
Right, okay, so, so that, I can, I can understand the difference now, okay, makes sense, thank you.
Currently, between T-Mobile and Verizon, the agreements there, we get about sixty-four thousand a year from the Beltair Park site. And depends on the agreement they have with AT&amp;T, we'll get forty percent of that. I'm guessing roughly fifteen, sixteen thousand would be the additional revenue.
Doug, I thank you, I'm not sure that we have any other questions at this time. So thank you for your presentation. We'll now move to agenda item number eight under Presentations, and councillor, if you would read the resolution in regarding nuisance abatement.
A resolution by the City Council of the City of Palm Coast, Florida, relating to the provision of nuisance abatement within the incorporated area of the city, estimating the service cost of nuisance abatement services to be assessed, determining that certain real property will be specifically benefited thereby, establishing the method of assessing the service cost against the real property that will be specifically benefited thereby, directing the city manager to prepare or direct the preparation of a preliminary assessment role based upon the methodology set forth herein, establishing a public hearing to consider imposition of the proposed assessments and the method of their collection, and directing the provision of notice in connection therewith, providing for severability and providing for an effective date.
Ladies, you have the opportunity to be our last presentation of today's meeting.
I had to change "good morning" to "good afternoon." Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Today's agenda item relates to the two thousand twenty-three nuisance abatement initial assessment. In two thousand and ten, the City Council adopted an ordinance for the creation of an assessment area to authorize the imposition of the nuisance abatement assessment to be included in the annual non-adventlorian tax bill sent through the county tax collector, where the city abated a nuisance. Every year, the city has prepared the preliminary, which is today's item, and the final coming to you next month with the assessment rolls. The final assessment roll is then transmitted to the tax collector by September fifteenth each year. The types of public nuisances violations covered under this ordinance are wildfire mitigation, hazardous trees, unsecured structures such as house or pool. This may be a broken window, a damaged door, depending on what the circumstances are, we would get it. Normally, we're contacted by the Sheriff's Department, or it may be a concerned citizen. An example of illegal dumping would be yard waste or accumulations of some type on unoccupied lots. Since two thousand and twelve, the city has collected one million, one hundred and fifty-three and forty-nine dollars and thirty-six cents from non-adventlorian nuisance abatement assessments. The total billed is greater, as there are times the taxes are paid in different years, because it goes in on the fifteenth, and it may, you've got your three years in arrears. When the tax deed occurs, depending on the amount of the surplus, the city may receive after applying its tax deed situation, and some amounts owed. And of course, there's a chart.
I, I do have a question, and it may be way off-base, but let me ask it anyway. Is there any reason why we would not consider adding damaged seawalls to this list of items in the future?
It's probably, seawalls are probably running about five to six hundred linear, dollars a linear foot. Your average, your, your lots out there are sixty, seventy, and eighty by one twenty-five without your tips. It would be a very costly abatement, unless, you know, I mean, it's something that could.
That's for, that's for repair, I'm just talking about the, the, when, when you're talking about nuisance abatement, you're talking about a fine because it's in poor condition, right?
No, we're, no, a nuisance abatement is where the city goes in and abates the nuisance itself.
Correct.
So this is.
At whose expense?
At the city's expense, but then, we go back and assess the property owner, and then the property, it's actually put on their tax bill to pay.
So is it inappropriate for that to be a consideration for the future?
For seawalls, no, it's not inappropriate, I mean, it could be an option. We would just need, I think what Barb is saying is, because the cost to do that is so high, you would need additional monies set forth in the beginning of that program before you could eventually recover them.
You would front the investment to be paid back by the resident over some period of time?
Well, yeah, depending.
We hope.
What's, how you did, okay, I, I don't want to get too deep on that, I just wanted to bring it up as a thought.
And our return with, and, and that's a little bit of a difference, because that's a very expensive, I mean, when you think about wildfire mitigation, you're thinking a hundred and seventy dollars a side, two hundred and seventy dollars for a total bill, three hundred and fifty dollars hatters the trees. But when you start talking about sixty thousand dollars per lot.
Right.
To repair or replace, and those ones that are normally the repair ones right now have lived their life. If you, and I, I'm going to go back in my day, but if you go off of Florida Park Drive, and you go off of the, or you go the first cut, which is farthest south, sections one, two, four, six, and eight, which are, you know, right off of Florida Park Drive, most of them probably are in need of repair. Whereas, other, section fifteen and sixteen, which are the second and third cuts off of the intercoastal waterway, are newer seawalls. So it would be quite an expense.
Just thank you, thank you for that. Questions, please, go ahead.
Since you mentioned seawalls, do we presently now find folks when their seawalls are in terrible condition?
We do, complaint-driven, yes. What happens is they're not going through the notice of remedy like I'm here today talking to you about. We're going through a notice of violation, where they are issued a violation, given a reasonable time to correct the violation. And then, if it's not corrected, they'd go to code board. But as it is right now, and speaking to all of the marine contractors that I have, they're at least a year out in being able to repair seawalls.
Okay, thank you.
We may want to hold this discussion when we get into the, to the rest of the analysis being done. I just want to find out if it had any legs here at all, that's all. Other questions for Barb?
No, I, I appreciate bringing up the seawalls, though, because I think dumping in our canals is a big issue as well.
Well, it's a, you know, it's a bigger solution somehow that we'll have to find some answer to, I don't know what it is yet. So, we're, we're a little ahead of ourselves probably with that, but we should start to include that in the conversation going forward. Questions?
Nope, I just want to say thank you for everything that your entire department does. Part of the allure of Palm Coast is, you know, it's beauty, and unfortunately, you oftentimes have to be the stick instead of the carrot, and you don't always get the, you know, the best publicity, but I want to say thank you for keeping Palm Coast awesome.
Ladies, thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
All right, good.
Thank you.
So with that, I'll open up the agenda for public, final public participation on items not previously discussed in today's meeting. Are there any members of the public that would like to come forward and address City Council? Seeing no one come forward, I will close public participation. I will ask my fellow City Council members, are there any final comments that you would like to make today?
I just want to thank staff for an awesome Independence Day event at the airport, and also county and all of our joining municipalities that came with us. That was really, really cool, I enjoyed the reading of the Declaration of Independence, I just thought that was pretty awesome. Also, please extend my thank you, Mr. Cody, to the TransMap gentleman that was here, I forgot his name, and I felt terrible, but I would like to thank him for doing this with you today. And then finally, I just want to thank my colleagues for, we're getting into kind of a climate where discussions are going to get very tough. And I know we all kind of have our policies that we want to dig our heels in on, but I just want to thank you for the respectful discussion, and I hope we can just collectively engage, continue to engage in respectful discussions.
Thank you for that, and I just add, if you will alert me to the next Flagler Beach Collaborative Meeting, I had, I had agreed that I would attend, assuming that we are sunshined properly. You had asked, and I will participate, if you just give me a heads up when, when that might be. And councillor Personhider, any final comments for today? Very good, councillor Manclufus?
No, nothing for me, I have TDC tomorrow, so I'll have some type of report on our next meeting, but thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up. I'm not going to bring that up at the end of each meeting, but we each know that our assignments, so when there's something relevant or you've attended, I would hope you would just volunteer it up, just short, brief, then we have other questions, we'll do that. I'll start doing that with my TPO assignment, and kind of get the ball rolling on that, and I thank you for that, councillor. And with that, I would ask the City Councilor, do you have any final comments today?
I have nothing.
Then I would go to City Manager, any final comments for today?
Nothing today, Mayor.
Very good, so I will thank staff again for all of your patience and all of the good work that you did today. And I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion.
I have a motion in a second, we are adjourned, thank you all.